Okay. Going to do a mic check real quick. Uh, the speed podium mic. Check, check. Jim Howell, check, check, check. Sarah Lopez, check, check. Ryan Beatty, check. David Dennis, check. Pete Metzner, check. Attorney, check, check. City manager, check. Last one, check, check, check.
... And you can always go to SedgwickCounty.org and see all the supporting documents that we have access to as we're making decisions on the things that we're voting on today. So, uh, got a lot of wonderful things to talk about. Busy, busy morning. Uh, so let's go ahead and get to work. Madam Clerk, I'm calling the meeting to order for Wednesday, July 10, 2024. First item, please.
Implication to be led by Father Rick Katurba. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we turn to you this day with the work that you place before our, before us and be, and that you allow us to share in, we turn to you both for the source of your own justice. We ask that you might fill our hearts both with, with prudence and for your own jurisdictions, for, for what you yourself seek amongst us, um, that we might not only live together as brothers and sisters, but that you, we might be able to assist one another in all of our needs. At this time, we ask especially for, for your providenc, help provide for all the needs of those that we serve. We ask also that you might, again, lift up our own hearts with desires to serve our brothers and sisters. Pray for, for all, all those you have given to us. We ask for that fraternal spirit of charity, help to guide all of our actions, our decisions, um, that it might, it might help to draw us towards one another and to your own glory. Ask all this through your Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father Rick, thank you so much for being here this morning. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Father, for coming. I appreciate you making the drive and it's great to see you this morning.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Metzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
There she is. Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. For today's county announcements, a couple of reminders about the upcoming primary election on August 6th. The deadline to register to vote is next Tuesday, July 16th. You can register online, by mail, or in person at the election office. If you have already registered but have moved or changed your name in the, since the last election, you need to update your information on file. All those details are available at SedgwickCounty.gov under the Elections tab. Excuse me. For the August 6th primary election, there's still a need for about 25 election workers to staff the election locations. And did you know that 16 and 17-year-olds are also eligible to work on those sites? It's a good way to get community service hours for school and earn $8.50 an hour. You must be able to work all day on primary election day and through mandatory training, and go through mandatory training. For more information or to apply, visit the election office website. All responses will help guide the Community Health Improvement Plan. For a list of upcoming sessions, please visit the Health Department section on our website. Sedgwick County and KADADs, the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services, are hosting another town hall meeting to discuss the new state mental health hospital being built at MacArthur and Meridian. The town hall will take place Thursday, August 1st, at Campus High School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole. Any questions for Nicole? It's my understanding that, uh, this might be your last meeting with us for a while.
Yes.
You've got something going on, or?
Yes. I am hoping to have a, a baby exit here in the next couple of days.
Well, we've all noticed how hard you've worked leading up to this, and so we appreciate it, and we will pray for wonderful blessings on your family and that baby boy. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Yeah, please do.
Um, I just want to share with everybody here that I had a dream the other night that Nicole had her baby this week, so I, um, am very happy for you, and I know you are ready to have this baby, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay. We did have a few people sign up for public agenda. Uh, you'll have five minutes. Our, our wonderful county clerk will let you know when the timer goes off, and, uh, then you'll be able to stand for any questions or comments. If you can just give us your name and address for the record, that would be helpful. First up, my friend Andrew Crane. Good morning, Andrew.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Crane, Guiding Paws ICT, uh, residing at, uh, 250 West Douglas Avenue. And, uh, good morning. Um, I wanted to definitely invite you guys to the big, uh, Guiding Paws fundraiser happening at Walk-Ons, um, July 31st. And also, I wanted to hear an update on the, uh, transportation and, uh, Amtrak. Um, I got some news at National Convention, um, that the, uh, Amtrak is gonna be, uh, hopefully gonna be rolling into Wichita. Um, the update that I got from the National, uh, Federation of the Blind is, uh, there's gonna be an application, um, that will be helping out, uh, blind and low vision, um, folks. And it is gonna be a, uh, app that is gonna be really easy to use, and, uh, a lot of other cities and counties are using this. Um, and, uh, it is, uh, well, uh, well-known and, uh, in that, um, so just wanted to bring that up to your attention. Um, and the app is, uh, uh, on MapQuest and... And the app is on MapQuest and other applications also that are out there, too. So just to let you guys know that, and thank you.
Okay, Andrew, we're going to turn this over to our resident Amtrak expert, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrew, the app you're talking about is for just public transportation, right?
Yes, it is. And it is going to be a, the app is, let me get the name of the...
That's right. Well, you can get it to us.
Yeah.
On the Amtrak, ironically, or I mean, timing is something because yesterday at the WAMPO meeting, which is publicly, it's been recorded, we did have somebody represented from Amtrak call in and give an update. And basically, we're in the game. Our I corridor was approved. We were one of 69 corridors that were approved out of the 300 that applied, and next step is Service Development Plan, which is supposed to come out maybe sometime June, which means it's already in July. So anyway, we're taking the necessary steps, and we're playing along with ODOT, Oklahoma Department of Transportation, and TxDOT are partners with us, so things are progressing nicely. So that's the update that I have.
Thank you.
You could watch it if you wanted to hear the Amtrak person.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Meitzner. Other questions?
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate you, bud.
Welcome. Thank you.
I will also let everyone know that Andrew also submitted a document from a partner called ICryo. I'll submit that for the record. Okay, next up, Andrea Sisco. Good morning, Ms. Sisco.
Good morning. Hello, Commissioner Beatty and County Commissioners. My name is Andre Simonsen Sisco. I live in 5015 Jade. I'm here on behalf of seniors speaking up for senior centers. The last time I was here, Commissioner Dennis asked me to come up with some ideas on ways that might be able to increase funding for senior centers. Look at giving the senior centers funding at the one mill that was voted on in 1982. While I know that this is not a good subject for many, it is what the voters voted on. Senior centers help meet essential needs in our community. I do think that the voters of Sedgwick County would like our county commissioners to look deep into what the county commissioner are giving money to that has not been voted on by the people and make needed adjustments to follow what the voters have asked for. Number two, request all cities and improvement districts to help support the senior centers in their area. While I'm very much aware, after the vote in 1982, the city of Wichita stopped funding the senior centers inside the city. I do not think that this is fair for cities and improvement districts that do help to continue to support their senior centers that are in their city, while the city of Wichita doesn't put any money toward senior centers inside the city of Wichita. When I stop and think about the closing of Colvin Senior Center, it makes me very sad. While I do not know the whole reason why it closed, I do know that it closed in an area that is needed those services. Request senior centers to, number three, sorry, request senior centers to submit an essential budget, salaries, utilities, items required by the seniors to ensure that funding is there. The seniors' centers each have different basic needs in their area. While we have been told that there is no funding formula, yet, when talking about the budget, it does have dollar attachments to receive the funding. Senior centers to meet essential needs may not require a jump from $35,000 to $57,000. It may only need an increase of $10,000 or $15,000. This would save the Sedgwick County money. Commissioner Dennis himself made mention of this at the meeting when Mr. Howell made a motion to give Oaklawn and Hayesville more funding. Four, take a better look into the needs of each senior center based on their location and the needs of the area. While some senior centers do not need outside help to provide food and hygiene products, others may. Please stop viewing all senior centers collaboratively, but as individuals, just as each of you are your own individual person. Five, look at the requirements that you make, that are placed, that are extra funding costs to senior centers. While a newsletter is great, I'm not sure that the printing costs and the mailing costs are wise to make it a requirement. It might work better to have the county post all the senior centers newsletters on a Sedgwick County website for seniors. This may help all senior centers to increase the amount of funding that's coming in from their fundraisers. We do know that seniors travel from senior center to senior center to make it better knowledge on giving them what's going on at each senior center and not just the one that they're attending. While we all know that education is important, to require all centers to offer more than 52 classes a year is like asking the seniors to return to school. By posting all senior centers newsletters on a website, the seniors could, if they wish, attend more classes and meet more people of their age without putting added pressure on those that do not want all that education. They want to enjoy their golden years. See if Sedgwick County can apply for senior center federal, state, and local grants through administering for community living. Number seven, look into Sedgwick County applying for research grants to study on aging, which can attract research funding and enhance the center's profiles. Number eight, explore intergenerational programs that might look at attracting funding from a broader range of sources. Number nine, stop and listen more to what the senior advisory board is telling you. Do not, a lot of the senior centers, senior people don't stay on your advisory board because they don't feel as though they're being heard. Thank you for your time. Please keep in mind the senior centers when you are working on your upcoming budget. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Sisco. I'll also note that the letter that she had read from, for the most part, I'll submit to the record for the county clerk.
Add one more.
Of course, yes, please.
Driving down here, I had one of my seniors, because I brought some seniors with me, made a very good comment in the van coming down. If you look at who came with me, we are a mixed community, and we are definitely a diverse community. Thank you.
Welcome. We're glad you're here this morning. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Andre Sisco, thank you for your testimony again this morning. I've had some concerns about the Agent Advisory Council for years. I think that the process by which they input their requests into the budget process has been not very good, and I don't know that they've ever really had much of a voice to get their voice or their ideas and requests back to the commission here. So I am very concerned about that. I think we need to get that fixed. If things don't change in those two areas, then there's really no purpose for even having this board.
I tend to agree. I served on the Aging Advisory Board for 12 years over different timeframes in my last however many years of working. The first thing we hear when we walk in the door is, this is how much money you get. If you go past that dollar amount, you have to take from something else. We are not going to go to the county commissioners and ask them for any more money than this dollar amount right here. So when we go into the advisory budget meeting that we're supposed to be giving you guys input on, we already know that we can't change anything. I mean, we've had people advocate for increases in foods. We've had people advocating in lots of different areas when I do those meetings, but we're already told this is what we get, and that's it, so don't ask for anything different. So we're not giving input.
Just for the public's, I guess, knowledge, it's been, in this last year, we have made several attempts to address funding to Oaklawn specifically, as well as a few other senior centers, and we were told to wait until the budget process. So here we are, and I can tell you right now, this is a very important topic for me on this budget adoption this year. We'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
One point on the advisory board. We have over 30 advisory boards. Manager Stoltz and I, on a personal level, have been going through these things and talking about how we can strengthen some of the outputs that are coming and getting more into strategic updates where they can come, all of our advisory boards coming, giving updates to the county commission on a more regular basis. So I appreciate your comment on that, and it's noted. So thank you so much, Ms. Sisco. Thanks for coming.
Okay, that concludes public comment. I'll make a motion to receive and file. Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of June 12, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, all Commissioners were present for both of these meetings. So if there's no objection, I'd like to combine a motion for both meeting minutes, both dates.
Second.
Okay. I'll make a formal motion, I guess. So I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 12 and June 26, 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Proclamations, item C, proclamation declaring pretrial, probation, and parole supervision week.
Okay. Wonderful. I have a proclamation that I'm delighted to read, a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas, community corrections is an essential part of the justice system with community corrections professionals who uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity. And whereas, community corrections professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community, they work in partnership with community agencies and groups. And whereas, community corrections professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy while providing services, support, and protection for victims. And whereas, community corrections professionals advocate community and restorative justice and are a true force for positive change in their communities. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim July 21 through the 27, 2024, as pretrial, probation, and parole supervision week. And we encourage all citizens to honor these community corrections professionals and to recognize their achievements. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I will make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And to accept the proclamation is Lori Gibbs, Deputy Director of Adult Services. Good morning, Lori. Thanks for being here.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Lori Gibbs, Deputy Director of Adult Programs. We appreciate the commission recognizing the week of July 21 as National Probation Officers Week. Each year, we set aside this time to recognize the hard work of our staff who are tasked with supervising the highest-risk individuals in our community. Their primary responsibilities are assisting these high-risk individuals in making positive changes in their lives by overcoming challenges and barriers that most of us don't experience. I've invited a couple of our employees here to accept this proclamation. I'd like them to introduce themselves, share where they work, and how long they've worked for the county.
Yes.
Hello, I'm Claudia George. I'm an intensive supervision officer, too, with adult residential and work release. I have been with the county for seven years now.
Yeah, wonderful.
Hi, my name is Brittany Pierce, and I'm an intensive supervision officer with Sedgwick County Drug Court, and I've been with Sedgwick County for eight years now.
Wonderful. Thank you. We appreciate your guys' service. Lori, this is an important proclamation. Can you tell us a little bit, how many in the adult services piece? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I don't think the community fully understands the scope of all that you do. How many individuals are you serving in the adult services piece?
Our average daily population in our field services program is about 1,200 individuals. In addition to that, in our pretrial programs, we serve around 450 at any given time.
Wonderful. That's a lot. You do a lot of work. So we're honored to declare this proclamation and celebrate you guys and celebrate all the work you do for this community. So any other questions or comments? Okay, wonderful. We want to get some pictures with you, if that's okay.
Very good.
We're going to go right out front on the stairs, get a good picture. So if we can take just a five-minute break real quick, remain patient, and we'll be right back.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item D, resolution appointing Kurt Carter to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is a resolution appointing Kurt Carter to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. This is Commissioner Dennis's appointment. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
And Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I've been looking for a position, a person to fill this position for a few months now. I did start talking with the cities in my district, and Garden Plain came up with a great recommendation, and that's to appoint Kurt Carter to the Aging and Disabilities Board. I'm pleased to make that motion today. And with that, I'll move that we approve Kurt Carter to the Board of County Commissioners, Aging and Physical Disabilities Board.
And I'm pleased to second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And Mr. Carter, are you in the room?
Yes.
Come on down.
Good morning, Commissioners.
All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. So help me God.
I do.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say something.
Thank you for the appointment. I appreciate it.
Mr. Carter, if you'd like to share a few thoughts.
Really, if I'm prepared at this time, thank you.
I know the feeling. Yeah. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Carter, we sincerely appreciate it. As I said, I've been looking for someone to fill that position for a little while. What I've always argued is that we are divided up by our districts by population. And I believe that I probably have one-fifth of the seniors in my district. Unfortunately, the division of the funding is not equitable, and that's been my concern all along. I want to make sure that the seniors in District Three get the same consideration as the seniors in every other district. So as you're representing us on the Aging and Physical Disabilities Board, remember, there's about 15 different things that aging does for seniors. Senior Centers is only one of those 15. And every single one of those are important. One is not more important than the other ones. So as you go forth, please keep that in mind. I never tell you how to vote. I won't call you up and say, "I want you to do this or that." I need you to make recommendations to us. But the only thing that I do hope is that we keep it equitable among the districts. Thank you.
Well, I do know that out in our area, there's a lot of isolation in the rural areas. And even in the small towns, there's individuals that are homebound. And you would think that in the small-town mentality that those people would be taken care of, but a lot of times, they're not. And so it's my hope that even in the city and in the rural areas, we could reach out and try to better penetrate those areas of need.
Very good.
Thank you again for volunteering. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Sheriff. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, item E, recognition of local law enforcement participation in Law Camp 2024.
Okay. Presentation from Ms. Sharon Van Horn. Good morning, Sharon.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me come and give some accolades to the people of Sedgwick County, our law enforcement and other agencies that helped with Law Camp. As I think you all know, Law Camp was started a long time ago when Sheriff Hill was the sheriff, and has continued all these years. And we got involved at the Crime Commission about four or five years ago because with law enforcement having the challenges they had, they needed some additional help. So this year, the last week of July, we had 180, no, not really, 97 10- to 14-year-old kids out at Watson Park in temperatures that ranged from 98 to 104. And we had an amazing group of volunteers from all over the county, and that's what I really want to acknowledge today. We had law enforcement officers from almost every law enforcement agency in Sedgwick County. We had McConnell Air Force Base. We had the Wichita and Sedgwick County Fire Department. We had the Kansas Highway Patrol. We had the KBI. And these people came out and spent three days with kids, showing them that law enforcement and first responders are your friend. And it was an absolutely amazing time. Commissioners Lopez and Meitzner came out in the heat and had lunch with us. We appreciated that. There's actually, I could talk forever and fill about the best of your meeting, but I won't. We have a video that kind of shows you what happened at camp, but really look at the end of it, because we did a roll for all of the organizations that helped, and we could not have done it without them. So I just wanted to acknowledge and praise these amazing people and to tell you Commissioners that Sedgwick County is an amazing place to live.
And I like the canoeing.
My name is Lorena, and my favorite thing is fishing.
My name is Mackenzie. I like jumping houses.
My name is Jasmine, and my favorite thing was making friends.
My name is Rylan, and my favorite part was canoeing.
I'm Xander. My favorite thing was kayaking.
Okay, my name's Riley, and my favorite thing about Law Camp is meeting the people and making friends.
My name's Troy Ward. My favorite thing to do here was probably the wipeout stuff, because I nearly broke my back.
My name's Markeith Harris. My favorite thing was just meeting everybody and getting to know different people.
My name is Dominic, and my favorite thing was kayaking.
Hi, I'm Dani, and my favorite thing about Law Camp would probably be being able to make new friends and doing a bunch of new things.
I'm Michelle, and my favorite thing about Law Camp is...
And I would just say in closing that we recognize that many of these children come from areas of town that are kind of food deserts. So we made sure we gave them a big breakfast and a big lunch every day, sent two snacks while we were there. And at the end of camp, we sent home one of the food bank packets that they send to kids during the school year. So it was a great event. We're going to do it again next year. So again, I just wanted to recognize these amazing people because it was blistering out there, and they met those kids as they got there at 8:30, and they had them in their sight and doing things with them until 3:30 in the afternoon. So kudos to wonderful Sedgwick County law enforcement and first responders.
Kudos indeed. Sharon, thank you. It looks like it was a wonderful time. I failed to mention that, for those that don't know, Sharon is the Executive Director of the Wichita Metro Crime Commission.
Yes.
So we're grateful for all that you do, for advocacy for our law enforcement community. Wonderful job, you and the entire Commission. So, speaking of Commission, I'm sure there's some comments and questions from my colleagues. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, Sharon, I just want to thank you for all the work that you put into this. I can't even imagine the logistics that go into three full days, knowing how busy you kept these kids. My son went, and it's not often that he comes home tired, and he was exhausted every three, each evening. So I appreciate that. But knowing he went, gotta go to Chicken and Pickle, and gotta go fishing, and gotta go kayaking, I mean, you name it, you guys, you did that. And I think it's just such a great way, like you said, for kids to engage with our law enforcement and know that, you know, they're not the bad guys, like they're there to help them. And some of the conversations I heard between law enforcement and the kids were just, it was so inspiring, and I loved being able to be a part of it. So thank you for doing that. For everybody that doesn't know, it is free for kids to go to. And not only do you give food at the end, but you also give hygiene products, which I thought was really nice, too. So, thank you so much.
The Sheriff's Office got some sort of a grant for hygiene items, so they took home, I don't know, shampoo and body deodorant. They had a big bag to take home.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Sharon, for this opportunity. And I was happy to join Commissioner Lopez that afternoon. And what I kind of picked up was that it looked like there was so much interaction between the police, fire, first responders with the kids, and maybe at least that group of 100 know that these law enforcement are real people, and it's okay. And I thought the chief, he made good...
Yes, we had almost 70 volunteers. So we had volunteers almost one-on-one for the kids, and they, each squad would be a squad of 10, and they would have two or three leaders. So there was just a lot of opportunity for them to see that these are real people and to talk about issues the kids might be having, and let them know that if they need them, that they are their friend.
Yeah, that's really good. Hey, can I point a privilege, just a quick off-topic? You're my appointment on the 911 Citizens Board, and I know it's just starting. Do you have any observations you want to share with us, how that's going, or?
Well, we had our first meeting, and it is a wonderful, diverse group of community citizens, some that know a lot about 911 and how it works and what their needs are, and some, like me, who have watched it but didn't have a clue. So I think my takeout from the meeting was that it will be helpful for this group if you Commissioners really set an agenda of what you are needing from us. I think that there were a lot of different thoughts about what kinds of information and help we can provide. So some definitive ideas or requirements or suggestions of what you are looking for from the group, I think, would be helpful. But it's a great group of citizens.
That's very good feedback. So anyway, thanks for serving on that, and thanks for letting me go off topic for just a second.
Great feedback. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thanks for everything you do in our community. This is not the only thing you do. Every place I go, you're there, and you have some major impact on our community. Besides that, she's a personal friend of mine, so I do appreciate what she does. I think all of us are members of the Crime Commission now, and that's a very important organization that we all support greatly. And I was very supportive when Commissioner Meitzner appointed you to the 911, and your observations are right on point. If you look at the resolution that we passed, it says that you act based on what direction is given by the County Commission. So you're doing exactly what the resolution said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity.
One second. Commissioner Howe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd be remiss if I didn't make a good comment here. They've said a lot of great things, and I agree. I love the video. Those kids obviously had a lot of fun. Love to see the collaboration and participation by so many different departments, including fire. I think that that gets these kids thinking about public safety. I know they're having a wonderful time. They're taken very good care of, and it gets them activated and understanding how things like government works, and these public services are so important. So thank you for all that the Crime Commission did in your leadership. Appreciate you.
Very good.
It is our pleasure.
Thank you again, Sharon. Okay, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
You have a motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Wonderful. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, a resolution determining the visibility of and authorizing the creations of a benefit district in Sedgwick County, Kansas, making certain findings relating thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of certain road improvements there in Four Oaks Edition.
Very impressive, Clerk. Mr. Packer, good to see you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Lynn Packer. I am your County Engineer and Director of Public Works. I am here today with Garth Herman. He is our bond counsel with Gemma Warren Bell. We are here today to discuss a resolution for the creation of a benefit district for road improvements in the Four Oaks Edition. The, I did want to note that the last several times we've been up here for a benefit district, those were developer-driven. This is not developer-driven. This is an established neighborhood, and therefore, the majority of the current property owners have signed a petition requesting these improvements. The Four Oaks neighborhood is located in District One. It is just south of 37th Street, along 127th Street East. It composes eight lots. The petition was signed in the affirmative by six of the eight property owners. The owners of 77.9% of the benefit district land was approved the petition. We have a estimate of the project of over $585,000. So the petition that they approved was for a total project cost of $600,000. This is, as you may recall, a system set up that we will front the cost of paying for the project, and the benefit district members will repay through special assessment taxes over the next 15 years. We estimate that to be about $73,000 per lot. There are only eight lots in this subdivision. To go over more of the financials, I'll have Garth come up and continue on.
Hey, great. Good morning, Garth. Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. As Lynn mentioned, Garth Herman with Gemma Warren Bell, the County Spotting Council. Lynn did a very good job of explaining the project and the process. The specific item before you, then, is the actual resolution. Upon adoption of the resolution, it formally authorizes the creation of that benefit district and the construction of the street improvements to serve those eight lots. It also approves the method of assessment and the financing where, as we've been through before, once the project is completed and the final costs are known, then we'll come back to do the special assessment project, and that is the process. And that is a process whereby those actual final costs of this project will be assessed equally per lot against those eight lots. 100% of the costs are anticipated to be assessed, with 0% to be paid by the county at large. So with that being said, I will stand for any questions that you may have on the project or the resolution.
Okay. This is a type of business that we're accustomed to, familiar with this. Any questions or comments for Garth? Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. Since it is in the district that I serve, be glad to make a motion. But, Garth, I want to thank you and Lynn. This was a pretty smooth process, and a lot of support, and I extend my gratitude to the citizens that needed something, and they're willing to step up to cover it. They're fortunate enough to be able to afford it. But a good example of citizens coming together and making something happen. And so all we do is get in the way of approving it, and get out of the way, and just approve it. So, anyway, if there's no other comments, I'd be glad to make a motion that adopt the resolution as presented.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Garth, thank you again. Lynn, thank you for the work you guys did on this. Appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, CON 2024-00019, conditional use request for an event center in the county and a waiver of supplemental use regulation 3-D6 and N-7 on property zone RR Rule Residential District, generally located on east side of North 151st Street West and 1/4 mile south of West 117th Street North.
Okay. Scott Waidell, welcome.
Good morning. Scott Waidell from the Planning Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present this one. So for this case, the applicant is requesting, as you heard, a conditional use in order to allow for an event center to operate on the subject site, which is outlined in red on this graphic. They are also requesting a waiver of a supplementary use regulation which requires 100-foot setback from any event center buildings from residential zoning nearby. So this item is being heard today because protests have been submitted against the application, and I'll cover those more in depth in just a moment. In terms of the request, as indicated, the applicants indicated they are requesting the conditional use in order to allow for the property to be used... the conditional use in order to allow for the property to be used for an event center. Property owners have utilized the property as an event center without the necessary zoning approvals. In violation of the zoning code, complaints were received, and the property owners received a notice of violation. The applicants do not reside at the property. They've indicated it is their intent in the future to retire to the property at some point. The applicants have indicated that they intend to use the structure for small events, mostly family gatherings, and that they may also rent out the event center, hence the need for the conditional use. In terms of the waiver, the applicants requesting the waiver for the 100-foot setback from buildings on the property to nearby residential zoning, they're requesting this because, as you can see, the lot is fairly narrow and the existing event center structure, which has been constructed, and I'll show you photos of that in just a moment, is approximately 62 feet from the north property line and 65 feet from the south property line. In terms of the property, the property is generally located on the east side of 151st Street and south of 117th Street. It's approximately 0.19 miles to the north of the city of Bentley. And you can see that roughly on this graphic here. According to MABCD records, oh, it's zone Rule Residential. It's currently developed with an event center structure and related accessory structures. I believe many of those are just sheds. And according to MABCD records, building permits were obtained in 2023 for the main structure, and that was building permits as a residential accessory or agricultural building. So, not commercial building permits, as would be required for an event center. No permits nor inspections were issued for the building as a commercial structure. So, in terms of context, properties to the north, east, south, and west are zoned Rule Residential, just shown here on this map. Properties to the north and south are developed with large lot residential with houses and accessory structures. Properties to the east and west are in use as agricultural fields. In terms of the staff report, the staff report includes information about the need for the conditional use, the need for the waiver, and parking requirements. In terms of review, on May 2nd, the city of Bentley Planning Commission considered the conditional use application and the waiver. The Bentley Planning Commission recommended denial five to zero. Two members of the public spoke in opposition of this request at that meeting with concerns about traffic, noise, trash. The city administrator slash police chief for the city of Bentley also made a presentation expressing concerns, which are described in the staff report. On May 6th, the District Three Citizen Advisory Board considered the conditional use application. The CAB recommended approval of both requests. That vote was four to three. And that was subject to conditions that were later recommended by the Planning Commission. One member of the public spoke in opposition to the conditional use application, citing increase in trash, traffic and noise. On May 9th, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item. The Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to conditions which are listed in the staff report. That vote was 10 to 2. The recommended conditions include a number of things, including parking requirements, operating times that would limit those times from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and 10:00 AM to midnight, Friday and Saturday. It would prohibit outdoor amplified music and also would restrict loitering after events. One member of the public spoke on the conditional use application with concerns, again, about noise, traffic, and parking. Two protests were received against this application. I'll show a graphic that shows where those were from. That totaled 17.95% of the protest area. It does not exceed the 20% state threshold. However, because the city of Bentley's Planning Commission recommended denial per the zoning code, it would require, it will require a four out of five vote to approve any zone change. And the recommended action coming to you from the Planning Commission is to approve the zone change, the conditional use, and also the waivers to authorize the resolution and publication. And again, that would require four votes. Alternatives include the following. You can override the Planning Commission, make alternative findings, and deny the application. That requires also four out of five, because it's an override. Or, as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for further consideration. And we would encourage a statement specifying the basis for failure to deny or approve the application. And that would require, again, simple majority. So, with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and photos. So, here is the site outlined in red. Here's the zoning map, again, showing Rule Residential surrounding the property. Here is the map from the comprehensive plan, which illustrates the area of influence and urban growth area for the city of Bentley. Here is a map from the comprehensive plan for the city of Bentley. And it does not actually show the subject site, but what it does show is recommendation for residential use immediately to the south, which is the yellow color. This is a graphic that was submitted as part of the application. It shows the dimensions in terms of the existing event center structure from the right-of-way. And this is a graphic that is new. This was requested as part of the briefings to measure the distance from the existing event center structure to nearby residential dwellings. And so, the nearest one is approximately 242 feet, and that is to the south. Here's the map of the protest area. The valid protests submitted within the protest area is shown in red. Again, slightly less than 18% of the protest area. This graphic also shows the city limits for Bentley, which is located in this dash line to the south. Here are photos from the site. In this photo, you can see some of the sheds that are on the site. And then further back, you can see the main structure. We'll see better photos of that in just a moment. So, here's the event center structure. More photos from the property. Now, it's also my understanding that the property owner who owns the subject site owns the site to the south. And so, this is looking at a different property that they also own. So, residential structures in the area, and then back to the site photo. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for the presentation. Scott, before we, before we move forward to questions with Scott, I want each commissioner to be able to declare any ex parte communication that they've had. We'll just go down the line. Commissioner Meitzner?
I've had ex parte communication, I think, via email and maybe letter. But I have not had any discussion directly with the applicant or the, the parties that sent, sent the emails. Thank you.
Same. I have had a couple of emails. So, I have had ex parte contact. I can still make an informed decision.
Yeah. I, myself, also have had ex parte communication via email. Not replied or corresponded with those emails. And I remain open-minded, willing to hear the case.
I, too, have received ex parte communication via email, and same, have not responded. And my mind remains open.
I received a couple of emails as well in opposition. I did not respond. And I'm totally neutral. Thank you.
Okay. Questions for Scott. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Well, Scott, I'm going to start off with the general question and then go to some specifics. I'm going to ask you the same question I ask every time you bring an event center to us. When are we going to have changes to the zoning code to incorporate event centers so that we have some standard regulations?
Yes, sir. And based on the questions that you've asked for previous cases, we have continued to look at that. We had a staff meeting just last week. And our current effort is, we have advanced plans, division staff putting together a table with different options. And then we'll have the advantages and disadvantages or trade-offs to each of those options. We hope to have that, a draft prepared for internal review shortly. So, after that, that will provide an opportunity, I think, for us to engage into a conversation with you about what community preferences and needs are in terms of the things that are on that table. So, it'll at least give us a framework for this, for the conversation.
Good. Well, I look forward to that, as always. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
A couple of questions. There's been some, both directions, some to deny, some to approve. I'm just curious, on the MAPC's recommendation to approve, one of the things that is in the plan is that there is no outside music. But the whole front of that building looks to me like it's a giant door. So, does that constitute indoor music, or does it constitute outdoor music if that big door is open?
If the door is open, well, first off, I'd like to highlight that this question did come up at the MAPC as well. And the explanation that I provided there is the same one I'll provide right now, which is that in order for it to be considered indoor, the door should be closed. Because the whole reason for having that condition is to keep the sound limited to the premises. And if that door is open and there's amplified music taking place, that certainly is not occurring. So, that would be a violation of that condition to have that door open and amplified music taking place at the property.
Okay. And we're kind of going at this backwards. Normally, we start outzoning, plating, and build a building. And might not be a question for you, but I don't know if this building meets the code for a commercial building. And we probably won't know that until if it gets approved and go into plating. So, with that being the case, we don't even know that they can use this building and as it exists now, if we zone this.
We do have an expert here from MABCD, so I want to acknowledge that. It's my understanding that they're, based on preliminary review of the building, just very quickly, that there would be some changes based on how it was originally permitted. Because remember, it was permitted as a accessory structure for residence or and/or agricultural building. And there are different standards. So, I believe there would have to be some changes to the building and services at the site.
Okay. So, this, this is going to have to be zoned, then platted, and then going to have to go through the process of deciding whether or not that it can even be used for the intended purpose. I'm a little concerned about parking. And again, we haven't got to the plating portion, so we don't know what the, the occupancy is of this building. But it does not look like there is a lot of parking. If you look at the street out front, County Road, it's got big ditches on both sides. So, if they have to park on the road, they're going to be right in the middle of the road. So, I'm concerned about parking. Do we have any idea whether or not that parking is even going to be adequate, and if it's going to inhibit traffic on the major road out front?
In terms of the parking, the first thing I would point out is that the Unified Zoning Code requires one parking space per two occupants of an event center. And that the applicant, in their comments at the MAPC meeting, indicated that they estimated perhaps 150 occupants at one time. They gave the size of the building, and I'll defer to them. They are here. And so, based on that, you can estimate that you would take at least, what, 75 parking spaces in order to achieve that maximum capacity. Now, what may happen is that they may be limited in how much parking they can provide on this site. And that may actually dictate how many, what their occupancy level is. If, if they can't park 75 cars there, it's something less, then that's going to change what their occupancy can be.
Okay. Well, that's all my questions for you right now. I may have more questions later on after we hear from the applicant. Thank you.
Okay. Scott, for public clarity, can you let us know, because the protest didn't meet the threshold, can you let us know and explain to the public why this would require four votes instead of the normal majority?
Sure. Absolutely. As part of the Unified Zoning Code, the County Commission set up a process where small cities in the county have an area of influence. It doesn't include Wichita simply because Wichita is already represented on the Planning Commission, Wichita Sudewick County Planning Commission. But in those areas of influence, the county allows a formal option for those cities to indicate that their planning commission wants to hear a zoning case that occurs there. If their planning commission elects to hear that, and if the planning commission recommends denial, then per the zoning code, it requires a supermajority vote here at the, the County Commission in order to approve a zone change or a conditional use. So, that is a self-imposed condition that the County Commission has done.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that clarity for the public. Okay, any specific questions for Scott at this time? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of clarifications here. Is, is this area served with well water?
I do not know that.
Kelly's is going like this, so I think he says yes.
Okay.
And what's the plan for the wastewater for this property?
I do not know that either.
So, imagine a 100, okay, they say septic tank. And I'm just thinking about, there's nothing in here restricts how many events per day, how many events per week or month or whatever. And I mentioned 150 people potentially coming onto this property a couple of times a day. That's, I don't know that's going to work very well. I just, I don't know there's a plan. I know the plat hasn't been done yet. But I'm just wondering, on less than a five-acre property, if that's even possible. All right, I'll just leave it with that. I have concerns. If you have any comments, I'd love to.
I don't. No, sir.
Commissioner Howe, I, I do have some follow-up questions on that. Kelly Dixon is here. Would you be able to give any clarity to what Commissioner Howe said? I think it's relevant.
Good morning. Kelly Dixon, Metropolitan Area Building. As far as water well, it is served by water well. Based on water usage, it may require that they become a public water supply, which means they'd have to go to KDHE and follow up with, with them on licensing and whatnot. As far as wastewater, it is served by a septic system. The septic system was installed, I don't know, several years, five, six years back, maybe. It was installed for a three-bedroom residence. So, it's probably not designed for the use that they're proposing. So, that would be looked at once we figure out occupancy. So, that would come through the, the plan review process, and then also during plating.
So, just, I know this is future decisions, a future discussion, but how do you put a wastewater system on a less than five-acre property for 150 people that might show up a couple of times a day? Is that even possible?
Yes, it is. It's going to be, it would be sized based on the number of occupants potentially in a, in a day. We have some EPA guidance that gives us gallons per person at, at an event. So, we can determine how big that wastewater field would have to be. I mean, it could be three times the size that it is right now. We're dealing with a much more high-strength waste at an event center than we would in normal house occupancy. So, we typically upsize those to, to meet that requirement.
Okay. I, I have, you know, I'll just, I'll continue to have some concerns. Do all the neighbors there also use well water?
Yes, sir. As far as I know, everybody out there is on well water.
This may be a question back for Scott again. But I'd like a question on one of the slides. I have a question on the distances. So, if I read this correctly, one of the neighbor's property is 242 feet from this building. Is that what I'm seeing there?
Yes, sir. And I'll go to that graphic. So, no, actually, I'll, I'll take that back because I believe that this is actually owned by the applicant. That one at 242 feet is immediately south, and they've indicated that they own the property to the south of them.
So, the nearest property is not owned by them is 407 feet?
407. That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Scott at this time? And closer. The applicant you said is here. If the applicant would like to share? Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Epifania Luna. My address is 2901 North Parkdale Court, Wichita, 67205. Just a little bit of background, this was never intended to be a venue. This was post-COVID. I'm a retired teacher, and so this was just a hangout for my family and friends. And so, then, family started asking if they could use it. And of course, we said yes. And so, then we decided, okay, well, you know, if that's what's happening, why can't we charge, you know, for people to use it? And so, like I said, it was never intended to be a venue. That's why we have the permits that we have. I'm also a general contractor, and so I was able to pull my own permit. And, you know, going forward, I'll be able to pull the permits necessary for the, the actual thing that, if, if approved, of course. More than anything, you know, when, whenever I started this, I did go into the city of Bentley. And I said, okay, you know, we like music. Is that going to be a problem? And they said, you're unincorporated, you're out of the city, you can do whatever you want. Now, I know that that's probably not all true. But that's what I was told before I even built this thing. And just so you know, we weren't able to be present at that Bentley meeting, just because we were at a town on a family emergency thing. So, we weren't able to be there. But we were present at the last two that were approved. Like, you know, the person that spoke before me said, it's a small place. It's not very big. big. It's, we're estimating 150 top. And keep in mind that these would be controlled groups of people. You know, it would be, you know, weddings or quinceañeras or birthdays and their guests. It wouldn't be like open to the public where, you know, it would be a controlled group of people, is what I'm saying. So small events. We do own the five acres to the south. Parking, there did used to be a small trailer there in the front, and so that's been demolished. And so we have parking all the way from where the venue sits itself, all the way to 151st. So it's quite big. But again, you know, that would be decided by, you know, going forward, whoever needs to decide that. Let me see, what else? What else? Septic. The septic that was currently there to service the small trailer that was there, it's not even used. We had a whole new system put in to accommodate for the building that we put in itself. We've probably had a total of eight events since it was built, and it's still going on the same septic. We haven't had to empty it yet. So just so you know, that it's not just the one that was built five years ago, we have a whole new system. And we also paid for the electric company to put electricity back there, because there was none back there. What else? Yeah, this will mostly be family events. You know, like I said, this was never intended to be anything to rent out to anybody, it was just mainly for us and our family. So I don't anticipate being busy like a regular event center would be. It's mostly for family and friends. So I think our main thing is, we're interested in doing the right thing, which is why we're here, going through your process. It was expensive to apply for this permit, but we did it anyway, knowing that it may not go through and we'll never see that money again. It was more than a thousand, close to a thousand or more. But we're interested in doing things the right way, which is why we're here, going through your process and asking you for consideration and, I don't know, hopefully, we'll see. Do you have anything to add? This is my husband, Guillermo.
I'm Guillermo, and like she said, there's been a few events, but there's never been a charge. It's just been cousin, nephew, stuff like that. And so their friends will come and say, hey, well, you rented to us. So, and that's the reason we're applying, to make it the right way and, you know, pay whatever we need to pay on whatever we make on that thing, if we do, end up being, you know, approved.
Well, thank you for the comments. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you so much. So just to be, you said you had, you did appear before, you said the last two hearings or whatever it was you said. Can you please clarify, where was that?
One of the meetings that we had was over in Goddard. I think it was a citizens advisory. And then we also were present at the M A B C D meeting. We weren't able to be present at the Bentley meeting, the very first one, which was the one that denied us.
Okay.
But like I said, you know, we are, it's unincorporated, and there is no noise. What am I looking for?
So, let me ask a different question. So apparently, there was some complaints at some point, and I don't, I'm reading some of the backup material here. It sounds to me like there's some, there's some conflict or confusion as to where that noise was coming from. Do you have any information about some nearby property that may be having some events that may be very loud that's bothering other neighbors?
Actually, yes. Okay. So I believe that, okay, so like, if you keep going north on 151st, and I believe the next street is 117th to the west, there's something going on over there. Like, we've been in our property here in Bentley, and we hear loud music coming from over there. And I feel that we're getting blamed for that. That is not us. And the traffic and the trash that the neighbors have commented about, that is not us. I feel like we're being blamed for what's going on over there. I believe they call it the agave ranch or something.
So as of right now, you have, you said you had about eight events, you believe?
About eight events, and we've kept the door closed. We own an insulation company, so we made sure to like heavily insulate that thing. And that door is also like double panel.
And you're, again, you talked about different types of events, but you also said primarily family and friends.
It's been family and friends, like my son's birthday, my niece's graduation, my little boy just had a 15th birthday party there, the 22nd.
And you've not charged for these uses?
No, sir. No, sir.
You have a registered business name at this point for this event center?
No.
You don't?
We have a name for it, but not registered yet.
It's not registered, no.
We're waiting on, yeah, come on.
And were you served a notice to cease and desist back in late 2023?
There was a sticker put on our window, yes. But like I said, we haven't been charging. So because it's our property, we are entitled to have events, I mean gatherings, correct?
If it is your, if it's for personal use, it's on a business?
Yes, yes.
Yes, of course.
Yes. It's been only been used as personal.
It's only if it becomes a commercial use, then we have to have a regulation in place, right? And I'll let staff correct me if I say that wrong. Again, so once you start charging for this and you start having, you know, agreements with third parties that come in and use your property, that's a business, and they have to be regulated, so.
I understand that, yep.
Okay. Chairman, I mean, I think that's all my questions at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Other questions for the applicant at this time?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Open up for a public comment on this zoning issue. Anybody from the public would like to share? Good morning. Just name an address. Our clerk will give you five minutes and we'll go from there.
Good morning, sir. James T. Bryan, I'm the City Administrator for the City of Bentley. Appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes. I believe you've received information and correspondence from the city regarding your opposition. My only comment this morning would be in response to Ms. Luna's comments to the commission. I'm afraid that she has been less than candid with the commission today. As part of my investigative file, I discovered that they were advertising online and asking for rental prices. That has since been taken down. But as recent as three weeks ago, I received a telephone call at my desk from someone wanting to contract with my police department to provide off-duty security at the venue, because they just recently rented it for an upcoming event. I, of course, declined that because it is not permitted for operation, and we have no law enforcement jurisdiction there. So please keep in mind that the information that you've heard today may not be totally accurate, and the City of Bentley remains very much opposed to this notion. Thank you for your time.
Questions or comments? Okay, thank you, sir. Welcome. Name an address for the record, please.
I am Amy Kelsey. I am 11611 North 100, that's not us, we're not doing it, it is the neighbors to the south. I went and had conversations with those neighbors, because I am concerned about this. Because when you have a tremendous amount of traffic going in and out of the property, you have the music, and then you have the gunfire. And if you approve this, and then they're allowed to have alcohol with the proper, you know, permits, then you're going to have strange people on the property, alcohol, and gunfire. And I'm very concerned about that. And those are my main concerns. But keep in mind, I just would like to say, if this was going in across from you in your home, and you had to sit and listen to the vibration for seven days a week, even with the time that they're limiting it, it's still something. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Ma'am, please don't go away.
Sorry. Sorry.
I have questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
When you heard that music, did you go out of your home and validate where that music was coming from?
Absolutely.
And you verified it was from this property?
We can, I know for a fact that it's not the streets, because Virginia and Tom Street are here also. And it is not the neighbors to the south.
What time of day was this?
They, normally, it can be anywhere from, it's normally in the evenings. And you can tell when there's, most of the time, you can tell when there's going to be an event of some kind, because as it gets dark, they have lights that they turn on on the driveway.
Evening could be like eight or nine o'clock, but...
Absolutely. The last one, the last one that they had that I would consider an event with major people over there, it was after 1:00 a.m. before the music stopped.
And you verified that?
Oh, absolutely.
All right. And we're on this map, there's a map ahead, top there. Can someone please help identify her property?
I am, if you look, I'm at that, just to the...
There's a mouse there, he's going to put the mouse right.
Right there. This is my property, right here.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Other comment? Okay, I'll officially, oh, please, yes. Good morning. Welcome. Just name an address for the record, and our clerk will give you five minutes.
We are Tom and Virginia Street at 11610 North 151st Street West. We are immediately north of the property, the said property, and my husband will start his comments.
The first comments that I'd like to make is that it appears to me, in looking at the...
Permits.
Permit, that everything referenced is for a family dwelling. Yet, for a family dwelling, one of the references states that there were no restroom facilities. Later on, we heard that there were four or five restroom facilities. The specifically state, no commercial use is allowed on the residential building permit. The approval for the septic system happens to be exactly the same size as it is on our house that was built back in 1980, that had the two of us and our two boys, that appears to be severely inadequate for the having events at that facility. The repeated reference to a one-family residential property, it seems surprising, it's a residential property with no bedrooms or no other separation, that it appears that this was the plan all along, that they have this as an event center, and have repeatedly falsely represented their operation to the Cedric County. Terms of the gunshots that were referenced, we have 50-some sheep that we feed by hand every day, twice a day. And when there's gunshots going off, it can get dangerous feeding those sheep when we're inside the pen, especially with the rams, that it certainly is not appreciated. It was falsely represented that it was from the neighbors to the south. But after they purchased the property to the south, there have been more than one repeated operation of gunfire. The gunfire is from...
Plastic bowls, et cetera, and cans. And that's the, one of the major complaints is that the permits were being overlooked and misidentified or for a different use. And we just request that the initial zoning be maintained. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. One second, please. Commissioner Howell.
Please don't go away. Got questions. Thank you. Sorry, I always, I feel like I always have questions.
[laughing]
They're not dismissed yet. I'm so sorry. Hey, I'm just curious, on the protest map, if I understand correctly, based on your address, you were, you said you're directly adjacent to this property, to where they own...
Yes, we are.
They own the two parcels to that, where the red square is, and the one to the, just the below that, you own the one just below that, is that correct?
They initially owned just one of those properties, the property that the building was put up on. Then they acquired the property to the south, which tended to eliminate any complaints from that area.
Is there a house on that, on that second property, the one they bought most recently?
There's a mobile home on that property.
And are people living there?
Not anymore.
Okay. And your property is just to this, just below that on that map, just right next door to that? No? Okay. Please help me out, staff.
We're due north.
Above.
They're right there. Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
So you are, you are in the red here. Okay.
Yes.
No, we're not in the red. We're above the red.
In this protest map, you could identify a protest, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you so much. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. At this time, we typically give the applicant another opportunity to share. If you'd like to do that, we welcome to hear. Okay. Wonderful.
First, the wedding coming up. You know, you have kids, right? So our kids took up on themselves and started advertising. So we told them to take it down. And on the advertisement, one of our nephews, they had an event for his kid's birthday party there, had a coworker said, well, they rented to us. So my son, our daughter, one of them rented it to them. So it was for July, actually, it was the 20th of this month. So at this point, we said, we can't tell you, you can't have your wedding anymore, so probably no charge, just because we don't want them to go find somewhere else to get married. So that's going to happen regardless. Like I said, probably no charge, just because we don't have the permits yet. That's the one for the wedding. Now, the shooting, I can guarantee you, we don't do the shooting. I do own guns. I don't like guns. I probably shot those guns there twice, one magazine, but that's about it. Anything else is to the south, to the north, to the east, they shoot everywhere. I mean, you can go out there in the evening, you hear nothing but shotguns.
And it is their right.
Yeah. I mean, it's not illegal to shoot guns there.
Now, we don't own a semi-automatic anything. He owns two handguns.
And we have a three-year-old and a two-year-old grandsons, and a 14-year-old boy, and we like to go out there in the evenings. He has chickens, so we feed the chickens, we walk around, and that's the last thing we want to have gunshots out there. So it's not, it's not us.
So the shots, in my opinion, is, does this work?
The shotguns...
Are coming from...
They come from this one right there, just south to the one that we purchased. And not kidding you not, one time, I think there was like about 500 gunshots in one or two hours. We had to leave because it was so many gunshots. And the guy, they own their property, came over and apologized. He said, that's my nephew. If it happens again, let me know, because his parents are in Mexico, so he's, Ghana want to control him.
So I'm curious to see where the neighbors verified that it was coming from us. Like, they say they spoke to the neighbors. I don't, I'm curious to know where, which neighbors they spoke to that told them that it was us doing the shooting.
I think at this time, the relevancy of what we got to do for the conditional use would, probably wouldn't be necessary, so.
Okay.
And one other thing, the bathrooms, there's two bathrooms for, you know, men and women. And there's two urinals and a stool on the mans, and two stools on the ladies. So, and we got two bedrooms in there. So it was, like she said, it was post-COVID, so we were going to hang out out there, because it couldn't be anywhere.
And, you know, we do have a small business, and our Christmas parties were always in our basement. We've grown, so we've outgrown our basement. So, yes, we did plan to have our Christmas parties here. But again, I mean, it's our property, I felt like we were within our right to do that. So no, there was no deceiving as far as how we were gonna use this. But never did we intend to rent it out for money. It was just for our personal use.
And I don't think you need to get a permit to have a family gathering or a Christmas party for company, right? Okay.
Any more questions?
Other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. So I'll officially close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to the bench. Questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And I appreciate all the people that spoke today on both sides of the issue. But I do have a motion. I move that the Board overrides the recommendation of the MAPC and denies conditional use due to the fact that this property is suitable for the use which has been restricted. You built that facility specifically for the family, and it's useful for that. You can continue to use it for family use. The extent to which the removal of the restrictions will detriment, they impact the neighboring properties, and we've heard discussion about that. The impact of the proposed development on the community, and it would likely increase traffic, traffic volume in this area, sanitation, and so forth. Also, it's based on the recommendations of the professional planning staff, both with the Planning Department and with the City of Bentley. So those are the reasons that I would make a motion to deny this application. Thank you.
I'll second the motion. Before we call for the vote, Commissioner Meister.
Thank you, and I have a quick question for Scott. Scott, so if this motion is upheld and the permit is denied, can they, they can reapply within a year?
Yes, sir. So the standard provision in the zoning code is twelve, is twenty-four months, so, sorry, twelve months, one year. However, if there are substantial changes to the application, then it can be six months.
Okay. So, as been stated by Commissioner Dennis, they can still operate this. It's not a venue. They can still have their own private family gatherings.
That is correct.
And if they have a high school graduation kid that wants to have his buddy, his or her buddies over, they can have them over, just like everybody else has had high school graduations, and they can play music, and they can have parking, and whatever else for that family event. And in the next year, if this would, if this motion carries, the owners could have a chance to mend fences, so to speak, with law enforcement, parking, neighbors, and maybe go through a normal process that would ease the obvious angst that has been shared with us related to what Mr. Bryan and others have shared. So they, so you could, so the... I know it's, it's a tough world in some of this stuff with neighbors and other law-related processes, but they would have a chance to help mend that, and they could re, maybe even change some of the, some of their application and come back within six months. But meanwhile, they can have whatever they want for families, and a neighbor can't complain if they have music for a, like I said, a high school graduation of one of their kids, and they just end up have to abide by whatever, you know, if the law is called and for trash or whatever. But that's just life. So I just wanted to confirm that that's what the timing is, six months to a year. Year for sure, but if it's significantly changed on an application, it could be six months.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks for answering that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. One second. Commissioner Howe? Okay. Well, thank you, Chairman, I just wanted to... Every, every property rights case is difficult. And unfortunately, someone usually wins and someone loses, and someone walks out maybe a little bit happy, and someone walks out pretty upset. So these are hard, and that's why, personally, I'm not regarding the Cabs' input. That's, you know, for Commissioner, for Commissioner of that district, that's fine. But I do think that Commissioner Meister's points were probably right. I agree. I think, the good news in this particular case is I think every decision you made in regard to purchasing, purchasing these properties and building this building, I think it's a nice-looking building, and I think it's gonna be great for your family. But these were, these were decisions made for personal use. And I think for that, for that, for that purpose, this is a really nice property. But it was never intended, as you, in your own words, it was never intended to be a commercial property. And I think, considering the neighbors and, and the number of vehicles, and some of the activities that would be essentially supported through government, if we were to prove this, I don't know that it's conducive to this neighborhood. So I, I agree, I think the motion is correct. And I don't know that in a year from now, I would feel substantially different about that. So just wanna share, we will take a look at that in the future again. But right now, I feel like, I think the property's not, not the right location, not the right size for what you're, what you're planning, in my personal opinion. And so I think that's, that's my reasons for kind of leaning in the idea that I don't think this is right for this, for this area. So I don't know that that would substantially change enough to convince me to look at this differently. I do think you're nice people. I think you're, I would encourage these neighbors to get along with each other. This is a difficult thing. I want you to enjoy the property, I hope your family enjoys the property. You have freedom to have music and to, I know you said you're not shooting guns out there, but obviously you're allowed to do that. I think for what you've been doing up to this point, there's really no problem. It's just turning this into a commercial property is just not right, in my personal opinion. I think there's a lot of reasons to, I would not support that today, so I'll support the motion, thank you. Very good. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meister. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howe. Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Hi. Okay, thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Cedric County, Kansas, adopting a county brand policy.
Welcome back, Ms. Nicole Gibbs.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. In front of you today is a proposed county brand policy. Apologies. The purpose of this is to formalize the use of our logo and present a professional unified look for Cedric County marketing materials and how to implement them. The highlights of the proposed policy is to officially remove the slogan "Working for You." It also sets color palettes and typography that would represent the county. It also gives us a consistent direction for electronic and printed marketing materials along with apparel. The scope of this policy applies to Cedric County divisions, departments, and elected officials, with the general exception of the Sheriff's Office, the DA, and the District Court. However, if those three entities, those three entities are subject to this policy if they choose to use the official logo in their, in their work. A little history on this, in February of 1982, the county adopted the current logo style and format via Resolution 561982. In January of 1985, this was readopted, the logo was readopted, the Keeper of the Plains was adopted as the official seal of Cedric County via Resolution 11985. The why we are doing this is by adopting this policy, and the guide formalizes what we already have been doing. And it works towards our end goal, which is a officially registered trademark of our logo. Currently, we have common law trademark on the logo due to the time of our use, but with a formal trademark, it allows us to follow through with enforcement outside approved county use. Also to note, there is no cost associated with implementation of this policy. And what I mean by that is, is it's not an immediate change. As things phase out or signage is updated, then we would then phase out items that have the "Working for You" slogan. I'm here for any questions, and I'm ready for you to consider the policy.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, one quick question. Some of the conversations that we had, we actually entertained this conversation for the first time about a month ago. And we had some feedback from some of the other electeds, treasurer, clerk, registrar of deeds, sheriff, DA. There's a difference between a logo and a seal. And we wanted to make sure we had clarity, because sometimes some of those departments are using their seal, their official stamped seal, also as their logo. Do you feel comfortable that we've got some resolution and worked through that to where everybody is happy?
I do. We have worked with those departments that express concern, and they are included in our brand guide. And to also clarify that this is for marketing materials, it's not in place of state official business.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, few questions. Commissioner Howe? Thank you, Chairman. I know years ago, we talked about getting rid of the tagline "Working for You." I don't know if we actually took official action on that at that time, did we? So we've been using it up until this point, so this is the moment where we're going to get rid of that tagline. Can I steal it? I love the phrase, actually, "Working for You," because I think actually, that's what government does. We're not here to control people. I know we've had a property rights case, it sounds like we're trying to regulate and control people, but really, it's all based in health and safety, and that particular case is about property rights between neighbors. And so that's, that makes that difficult, but government is here to serve.
Yes.
We're here to serve people. And I think that a tagline actually makes that clear, that we're here to help and serve people, that's why we're here. I like the phrase, and I am not personally in favor of getting rid of that tagline. I think it's, I think it's served the county very well. And I know years ago, some of the commissioners proposed getting rid of that, and I think we had a very good discussion, but we didn't make a change at that time. I made the same point at that time. I think, to the extent, to the extent the county's gonna get rid of that tagline, I'm gonna put that on everything I do personally. I love it personally. I, it's exactly how I feel, I am working for the people, that's why I'm here. So I don't know, I agree with that particular change, the rest of this is fine, I don't have any problem with that. But I do, I do like that logo, and if not that logo, you see the seal, you don't have any, necessarily any, anything to fill your mind with, what does this mean? I think the idea of "Working for You" is actually really good. So I probably, I'm kind of, I'm kind of torn on what to do on this vote, but thank you for the, thank you for the info.
If I may, we, to my knowledge, there was a public discussion between commissioners and staff about the slogan. And in our opinion, and the reason why I bring it to you now for official, is just because we don't have the words out there doesn't change the work that we do, and we all continually work to serve the community and work for the people. But for our marketing purposes and what we've been doing going forward, it makes a little bit cleaner look and easier for us to go forward without the slogan.
Okay. I would just note that obviously, an organization with 2,800-plus employees and the size that we are, I understand the need to try to clean up, make sure there's uniformity and consistency with how the brand is being used, even all the way down to font and color code. I think that is important, I think that's pretty customary for organizations, particularly of this size. So I do understand that, and appreciate the work that you and your team have put into this, so... Any other questions on this? Okay, I will gladly make a motion to adopt the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of a new county brand policy. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meister. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howe. Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Hi. Okay, thank you, Nicole. Okay, there, Tom, hang tight, there's a couple requests that we take about a five-minute break. Sorry. So we do need about a five-minute break, if that's okay, okay? Hang tight, be on your best behavior.
Okay, we are, we are back. Thank you for that quick break. Let's get back to work. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item, item I, Presentation of the County Manager's 2025 Recommended Budget.
And the aforementioned manager, Tom Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office. It's appropriate that we do this presentation after a county branding policy discussion because you can see how unwieldy and difficult this organization is. It's very complex. A lot of moving pieces. So told Nicole, if you can do a branding policy, we can do a budget. It's, it's a lot of discussion. This is the county budget team. They, we have representatives from all divisions within the county organizational structure. The job of this group is to, from about February on, listen very closely to what the county commission says in public meetings and in budget hearings. And then they help me make really hard decisions as we prepare a recommended budget. Hard decisions regarding decision packages, what we accept and what we don't. Let me explain to the public, because the language is different between governments. A decision package in Cedric County is when a department or an elected official office puts a request into the commission for either people or things or programs that cost money. And nobody in Cedric County, no elected office or no department strives for mediocrity. They all strive for excellence. And to get to excellence, they submit decision packages which they think will tip them into excellence. Unfortunately, we have finite resources and we have to go in and make hard decisions on what to allow and what not to allow. And I'll get into that in this presentation. They also, this team also helped me look at external requests. As government, for the county, we get external requests from nonprofit groups, from community groups on funding for projects which are significant and important to this community. But unfortunately, we have finite resources. And then we always ask the second question to, and I'll talk about this later, what's the, what's the space and role of government in these types of operations in the community? So they help me go through and make those kinds of cuts. And then they help me formulate the goals based on what we think we hear commissioners say. And these are the four goals that we worked forward through this year as we were building this budget. Number one was to emphasize workforce through the three staples of good workforce management. That is compensation, physical environment, and fair supervisory practice to make sure people are treated with respect and allowed to grow in their occupations and hit self-actualization in whatever it is that they do in a very diverse county organization. Number two message we thought we heard this year was to really refocus on core county service. Those that are, as county government, you are aware, we do a lot of work as a conduit for the state of Kansas directly. We do a lot of work that is statutorily driven. And we also provide services which keep our communities safe. So anything that's directed by state of Kansas, anything that is directly impacts the safety of our citizens, those rise to the top in this type of budget prioritization process. The third thing we thought we heard from the commission was, let's take a really hard look at how we treat our taxpayers. Let's try to cut mill levy. Let's try to limit the amount of valuation increase that we capture and give some money back to the people if at all possible. So we kept that in the back of our mind as we rolled forward and got new valuation numbers. And then what we always do as staff is we always review the government role in a space. And it causes us to look historically at decisions that were made by commissions previously in years and some decades ago on how, how a government got involved in funding a certain function or facet of society. We constantly question that and look for ways to modify that. Let me go through the process timeline here real quickly, real quick, just for the public. I know the commission is keenly aware of this. Budget processes start every, every late fall, early winter of a previous year. So we started in late 2023 with department and division head prep and updating of strategic plans. We involve you formally in a February of the year of the budget cycle, which is February this year. We then have a time period in April where I sit with this leadership team that I just had up on the screen. And we get a dress rehearsal of everybody, all the departments and elected offices, what they're asking for and what their budget looks like. And we have discussion and we make trims and we make additions. And then we bring it forward to the people represented by the commission. In May and June, we did that this year as well. We threw two town hall meetings in this year, one on the east side of town, one on the south side of town. Didn't get the greatest attendance that we had, but those people that showed up, it was a very interesting process, very interesting discussion back and forth between staff and the citizens. And as commission showed up too, discussion between commission and, and citizens. So I, I think this is something we want to really strongly consider again next year, maybe market it more heavily and hopefully get more, more people to attend. Today is July 10. That's the presentation of recommended budget, last update, which Lauren will talk about on the next agenda item. We have two public meetings, one of which we are statutorily driven to do. One meeting is July 31. That's an evening meeting. And then one during the day of ratification of the budget, August 21, which is the second public hearing. And that is also Revenue Neutral Rate Hearing Day and Budget Adoption Day. Okay, before I get into recommendations, let's just kind of take a step back and look at state of operations. As the manager, I can say, I think we are in a much better place today than we were two years ago in regard to staffing. All of our staffing universally across the board has improved, specifically in areas that were really chronically hurting right after the pandemic. So, but we still have work to do and the numbers will bear this out. And there's reasons why we've seen improved staffing, mostly because of decisions this commission has made during the last two budget cycles. Inflation has slowed, fortunately, but costs are still very high. And we are still having supply chain issues in some of the different kinds of vehicles we buy and the different kinds of equipment we need to run the county. There are still supply chain and weight issues on many of these fronts. We have several major projects and community issues that have come to the forefront, which is just a good news, bad news situation. It's good because we're moving the community forward. It's bad because a lot of this work is piled up and we are just busy as a staff, as you are as a commission, trying to balance all these things. That's everything from, what do we do with an administrative building and facility, to what do we do with our juvenile complex? We have a state psych hospital project going on with the state of Kansas. Major renovations at the jail. We have an election building we acquired. What do we do with comm care leases that are expiring? How do we mobilize and, and place comm care? And then how do we, as a county, move our mental health and substance abuse components to an overarching homelessness situation, which is on the forefront of everyone's mind? It seems to be the, the main topic within the community right now. How does the county fit into that? So we have a lot of balls. We're juggling a lot of, a lot of issues in the air. And then just to add to the current state of operations, we knew walking in that we were going to have roughly a $5 million forecasted structural imbalance at the start of our budget process, mostly due to the actions that the commission had to take last year with the sheriff's office to keep them competitive with the Wichita Police Department that had given a mid-year raise to its officers. So we knew going in, we were going to be $5 million in the hole moving forward. That number, when we went through budget processes, through some decision packages that we knew we had to allow due to just the environment, that number actually ballooned almost to $9 million. So we had our work cut out for us as a staff going forward and trying to figure out how we were going to trim this. And we said from the beginning, let's put this on a two-year glide to where we can get close this year and finish it off next year and get this budget stable again. When I say structural imbalance, that means long-term, we have more expenses going out than we have revenue coming in. It's like if you're running your house. You have to fix that at some point, or you will, you can, you can't seize as an operational organization or business any longer. Okay, now recommended adjustments. This is the proverbial good news, bad news part of the, of the discussion. First, let's look at, at employee compensation. So this recommended budget allows for market adjustments to the district attorney, the attorneys in that office, not civilian staff, our corrections employees, and an adjustment in the EMS pay plan. It recommends a 2% scale adjustment for the sheriff starting January 1, along with his 5% steps for his employees. That was tentatively set at 4.65. We have scaled that back to 2. And we're also forecasting and recommending that with, inside this fiscal year, 2024, that we give them the 2% adjust that the commission talked about when you gave them the adjustments back in January. We are recommending that you do that and the budget reflects that moving forward. So 2% mid-year this year, 2% January 1 of start of next year, and then their normal step raise pattern that, that we have implemented. Step, 3% steps for EMS and fire District 1 pay plans with forecasted scale adjustments to them both in 2026. A 3% GPA for emergency communications. And the reason it's only 3% is you gave them a 6% in March. So with, they essentially got their adjustment early. So a 3% would kick in on January 1 of 2025. And then for comm care and all general pay plan employees, 2% scale adjustment and 3% GPA. Overall, this is about $16.7 million of compensation adjustments for 2025 recommended budget. Just real quickly, I took the numbers before I came to the meeting. In the last five budget years, if this is approved, in the last five budget years, the commission will have approved upwards of $64 million of compensation in the last five budget cycles. That's why you're seeing staffing improving and getting better every year since the commission undertook that. Staffing changes. So we try to, we don't want to grow government. We're conscious of that. But we also recognize that in our areas, particularly in public safety, we have needs. This recommended budget recommends 10 positions added to 911, emergency communications. It will allow that director to continue to segregate call takers from dispatcher so we don't have all this multitasking going on at the desk. It allows her to improve quality control and training for her employees. And this is phase one, the heavy phase, would have really a two-phase process for us looking at 911. We want six positions in Cedric County Fire District 1 for improved services and to reduce some overtime. So we support the chief's request for that. We want two positions in the DA's office, not attorneys. These are ancillary staff that help attorneys do their job more effectively. Two positions in EMS and one position, and two positions in IT. Single positions in risk management, criminal justice partnership, the 18th Judicial District Court, and HR to either centralize or streamline operations so that we don't need, for example, in HR recruiters in all these different departments. We have a single recruiting office. And as an organization, then we're more efficient now we do business. And it saves money in the long run. Far as job environment and infrastructure, we have $28.8 million in this recommended budget for county building improvements. The two heavy lifts there are the juvenile community-based service building discussion. And the, and we've talked about this in a couple of staff meetings, the HVAC controls replacement project in the jail. And that's a multi-phase project as well. Those are the, make up the bulk of that $28.8 million. There's $760,000 for a drainage project and $19 million in Lenz's budget for roads and bridge improvement, infrastructure. Other adjustments. We are recommending in this budget, back to the discussion of core, and maybe not core services, a reduction in culture arts funding by roughly $1 million. We're looking at reducing the county mill levy. This is recommending to reduce county mill levy by one-third of a mill and the fire mill levy by two-thirds of a mill. We're recommending not to capture all valuation growth available. We are not funding an additional $6.3 million in department requests made through the budget process. And remember, departments don't aspire to be mediocre. They aspire to be excellent. The take, take on this, if we're not going to fund those decision packages, it makes it really difficult for, for the departments. We are not recommending that $6.3 million be funded. We are not recommending almost any of the almost $6 million of external requests we have, trying to keep the money directed toward staff, directed toward core government function. We are accepting a $1.1 million revenue package for EMS, which they graciously brought to the table now. That helps the bottom line, but the consumer out there is now going to have to pay more for EMS services. That's the bottom line. So that's the proverbial good news, bad news of that item. We are recommending the implementation of an $80,000 reduction on KPTS channel. There are other ways people can watch these meetings, which, and Nicole can talk about this more in depth. We are recommending a reduction of our KPTS contract. So think of these in terms of good news, bad news, or give and take. The give is, and when I say good, this is what's good for citizens, public safety enhancement, healthy compensation adjustments for staff stability for county people who provide services, investment in infrastructure, a mill levy reduction, not capturing full valuation. And our structural imbalance went from $9 million down to about $1.4 million, which the CFO and I and the, and the budget team think we can manage through this next year. We can catch this up and have this ship righted in the two-year glide path, which we originally was our aspiration. The bad news is, the takeaway from citizens are, we've cut $6.3 million of decision packages. Departments are going to have to live with that and struggle with that. We did not include any of the $6 million of external requests. And these are good requests. These are good people, good organizations coming in, asking for this help, and we have to say no. So that is, is a struggle for the community. We've accepted the EMS increase of service fees. We've reduced culture and arts funding. And we have cut KPTS. Now, those are, those are bad things for the citizen. But these are, it's a prioritization process in a budget that we're trying to do the right thing and based on what we thought we heard during, during the, the many public discussions we've had on this. In total, the Cedric County budget's a little over $563 million now. The fire district's a little over $30 million. Our property tax rates are estimated for, on the county side, government side, 28.659 mills, which is a reduction of mills. And on the fire district side, a reduction to 17.00 mills, which is almost a whole mill. It's, we are at 17.88 now, or almost 18. So we're asking for, that would be what this recommended budget would bring forward. This is a pie chart we show every year. I'll just tell you, we try to keep general government flat. We try to keep public works healthy and flat, public services flat. We are increasing in public safety. There is, you'll see more and more of this pie chart becoming more yellow over time with public safety needs. And we are diminishing, and you'll see culture wreck and community development. Get this to fraction of the budget, 4% total. We're cutting even into that 4%. So we're going to see reductions there in this recommended budget. Next steps. Our recommended budget will be online today at cedriccounty.org for anyone that wants to look at the hundreds of pages there. I didn't bring the book up. It's too heavy to carry up here. It's a lot. We have an online public forum that will become available today at 3 o'clock through August 19th, that people can get online, make comments and, suggestions in the budget that will feed to the commissioners. Our first public hearing, as I said, was July 31 at 6:00 PM. Our second public hearing will be August 21. And our adoption date hopefully is August 21 at 9:00 AM at that BOCC meeting. So we have tried to, we have tried to make this, a lot of times, governments criticize because this is status quo budget. Same thing every year, day in, day out, same thing. We have tried We have tried to make this budget strategic and thoughtful. It is not status quo. There's different things in here, for good or bad, that we have added in. We are after workforce stability. We want to move, based on what we're hearing from commission, more back to a core government service function. We should always ask ourselves, what's the role in government, in society? What should, where should we be, where should we not be? And then we should always consider the people who pay taxes. This recommended budget tried to do all of that. The question for you now, as the elected body, is did we go too far? Did we not go far enough? And what adjustments should we make between now and August 21? And that rests with you. I would be glad to answer any questions if there are none, I just ask that you would receive and file today.
Okay. Tom, thank you. Publicly, I want to thank you for your work on this, the budget team. I know Lauren will probably hear from you here shortly on some things, but thank your entire team from finance and the budget team for all the work. This is quite a lift every single year. Most important thing we do as commissioners is this budget and the support that we get from your staff, Tom. And Lauren, you and your staff is exceptional. So I just want to publicly say thank you for all the work. And as I can imagine, there are probably going to be some questions and comments. So Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And Tom, first of all, I want to start with your staff because they do a fantastic job with, not just their finance folks, but it took the entire staff to come together to provide the inputs to all of our folks in finance in order for you to come up with this budget. This budget's 826 pages long. That takes a lot of work from a lot of people to take a look at exactly what we need. You've listened to us, we need, at least to the commissions, we need to go back and concentrate on our core services to make sure that we're providing those services that are necessary to the community. You're looking at some $16.7 million in compensation. Why do we have to do that? Well, it's obvious that just a few years ago, we were 125 short in the jail, we were 20 or 30 short in EMS, 20 or 30 short in 911. All of these are services that the public has to have. They support public safety. So we've, you mentioned, we've given $64 million worth of pay increases in the last five budget cycles. That's important to the community to understand is that we're facing the same market pressures as anyone else that's trying to hire these same folks. And our people are very talented and do things that are critical to our community, and as such, we have to pay them or they're going to go somewhere else. And we saw that, and that's the reason we started making these compensation changes. So I hope everybody recognizes that. Also, one of the things that we ask you all to take a look at is the mill levy. The most hated tax that we have is property tax, and that comes from the mill levy. I'm going to say more about it when we get to consent agenda on why that this impacts this, but I'll save that for discussion here later on. But that mill levy, you are actually, this is the second year in a row, we're looking at a reduction in the mill levy. Last year, as I recall, I think it was Sedgwick County, I think Hayesville, and maybe Valley Center were the only three, and there is 125 taxing agencies, believe it or not, 125 different organizations just in the county, Sedgwick County, that can tax people. That includes cities, townships, water districts, school districts. It's amazing how many people can tax our citizens. And yet, two years in a row now, we're going to look at a reduction. Does that mean we're not going to declare that we're going to break the R and R rules that they've established? No, we have to, because we face the exact same pressures that the community has when that they need money and compensation for their jobs. Everything goes up. And if we stuck by the revenue neutral rate, we would have to cut an awful lot of people. And we can't afford to do that. We are compensating them so that we keep them and not lose them. So I think you've done exactly what the commission has asked you to do as we move forward. I am supportive of what we've done. I still look forward to the input that we'll get online, we'll get during the times that we open it up for the public comment. But you all have done a fantastic job. We need to keep the 3,000, almost 3,000 great employees that we have, and that's critical for us to be able to do our mission. We are a service organization, and without people, we can't provide the services that were required. So again, thanks not only to the finance folks, but to the entire staff for coming together to help us put together this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd be remiss if I didn't start with Thanksgiving. You do a great job and your staff does a wonderful job. And I always look at Lindsay because I know she's involved in this deeply as well, so appreciate all the work that's been done. I think we have done our best to get public input. I think a lot of our challenge comes from the state, unfortunately. I think we have a lot of work to do to communicate with our state friends that they're pushing government services that really are mandated by the state of Kansas onto our local property taxpayers. I find that very troubling, but I think we have some work to do. And one of the things I've been working on is trying to find different ideas on how to, how to maybe rethink about somehow, you know, I'm kind of a big thinker, rethink of how we do some of those things. I've got about 10 things in my head, I'm not going to mention any of those. Commissioner Meister, thank you very much. He knows I have a lot to say, but if anybody's interested in some more details, there was a staff meeting yesterday, I think about the last 40 minutes of that, we kind of got into some of those ideas. That staff meeting actually, I think, explained some of our perspective and challenges as to why, why we need to work with our state friends to get some of that fixed. But I have a couple of questions. So this budget proposal today has a 0.329 mill levy recommended reduction. If you add that up to what actually happened, after the technical adjustments last year, that adds up to a total of 0.7 mills. Is my numbers right? 0.7 mills. If you look at what actually happened last year, we adjusted it down by our adoption of the budget, plus there's technical adjustments that happened afterwards, so we ended up with 29.988 mills. And our recommended starting mill levy this year is 29, sorry, 28.659. That's a total of 0.70 in two years.
Two years, yes.
Over two years, right? Just this year's mill levy adjustment alone is a, essentially, we are foregoing or giving up $2.138 million with a 0.329 mill levy reduction. So those are interesting numbers for a couple of reasons. If I go to page 63 in the budget book that you gave us a couple of days ago, just for the public's enjoyment, this is what you can find online, electronic format. We have paper copies, I can write all over them, which I like to do, but on page 63, it talks about the shortfall. Now, we have a balanced budget, but balanced budgets come with some things. You can have revenue and you have expenditures, you have borrowed money, we call that bonds, and then we also have ending balance we can use if needed. And in this particular case, what it looks to me like is we have a $2.314 million shortfall. Am I right about that?
Say it again, Commissioner.
A $2.314 million shortfall. Yes?
Oh, I thought you were going to ask a question about that.
So I guess my point is, we're giving up $2.1 million by trying to lower mill levy, and we have a $2.3 million shortfall, based on recommended, recommended budget as it sits right now, without changes. That's where we currently are. So a couple, I guess my question is, those seem like a little bit arbitrary to me. Why, why those numbers? Why not half a mill? Or why not just capture the difference? Why not capture that and not have that? I mean, why, why is that mill levy reduction the right number? And why is that deficit spending the right number? Those are, seem like arbitrary decisions made by all of us, I guess, but I'm just curious, why those numbers?
So Lindsay Povisso, your CFO, that's a complex question, so bear with me. When we went through the process this year, we heard from the commission about what the priorities were with regard to public safety, but also that there was a concern for making sure that taxpayers saw a reduction. So when we received final estimates for the assessed value growth on the county side, we looked at what was a bearable amount of growth we could capture that we thought would still allow the commission to meet its goals, recognizing that we had some high priority decision packages that Tom discussed, things for 911, EMS, and others, compensation adjustments. So while this forecast that you're talking about on page 63 shows a deficit of 2.3 million, that is across all five county property tax-supported funds. It includes cash funding, it includes drawing down fund balance in some of those funds we've discussed in the past, that also, for example, includes WSU. When Tom talks about a structural imbalance, and this is something we've talked about before, we look at recurring revenues and recurring expenses. We know that our investment income is exceptionally high. For example, if you look at that page 63, and you look at row 14, uses of money and property, that's where our investment income is reflected. And you can see changes the last few years in actuals, and you can see that we continue to expect to have a high amount of revenue in that area. But we consider that one-time money. That is not something that helps us resolve that structural imbalance. So all of those moving parts are reflected in this forecast. So when we talk about why we chose the mill levy rate reduction we did, it's because we captured a certain amount of assessed value that we thought was bearable that allowed us to meet those priorities. We had talked at your February retreat about trying to resolve this structural imbalance over two budget years. And so this gets us to about 1.4, 1.5 million that we still have to fix in 2026. And so it was all of those factors taken together that made us come to that recommendation. And hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I think that, again, this is a complex answer and appreciate that. And I, so I guess what I'm saying, and based on your final comment there, this does include essentially about a 1.4 to 1.5 million structural imbalance.
Yes.
That we're accepting by, we're going to, we're going to cover that with ending balance, but we call that deficit spending. There's only way to cover that.
It is for one year, and that's permissible under your policy as long as we have a plan.
Okay. And what you presented so far for your PowerPoint slides, Mr. Manager, that, those are, those adjustments are already reflected in these forecast numbers, correct?
Yes.
One other, just a couple of things I would note, you know, WSU last year got 1.5 mills. They should have got 1.5 mills. That doesn't seem to change for some reason, I don't know why, but it's always exactly 1.5 mills. I mean, it's interesting, we have to capture the increase in assessed value, and they get a giant, you know, bigger check each and every year because assessed value did go up again. And notice that the aging number went from 0.385 to 0.371. We just had a good discussion earlier with some folks here from aging people, and I mean, the department, people who serve on that board and senior centers, they have some people here reflecting their desire for some changes there. But that's a reduction. Do we, I've not studied the book as much as I probably should have at this point. Is there reductions in spending in that department? There's not. Okay. All right. So my questions for just a few minutes, I might come back. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll make a couple, I have a question, some comments, and I want to give some direction about what we're going to do as a commission before budget adoption. You talked about the two-year glide path to reduce deficit and using the reference of deficit spending through ending balance. Can you give us an idea of what the estimated ending balance will look like? What cash reserve or ending balance do we have with this recommended budget?
I'll let you have it on that.
Tom's just moving out of it. So if you look at the bottom of page 63, you will see that across all of those funds that we talk about, we have started 2024 with a cumulative total of $119 million in fund balance across all of those funds. If we look at just the general fund, and I'm going to transition over to what we call GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, as opposed to budgetary basis, because when we talk about how much cash you can actually spend, that's the basis that we look at. You started 2024 with a general fund, a fund balance of 88, or I'm sorry, 89.7 million, of which 87.8 million is unrestricted. You have a policy that says you have to keep at least 20% of the adopted general fund budget in there. So for 2024, that's equivalent to $60.6 million. So when we compare that 87.8 million unrestricted figure with that 20% requirement, we have available unrestricted funds of 27.2 million. But I'm going to point out that if you take out that investment income that we talked about on your forecast side, we're going to spend a lot of that on your capital projects in 2025. So as Tom mentioned, there's a significant amount of spending in facility capital projects next year.
I make sure I fully understand, the public fully understands. We are required by internal policy, not law?
Correct, not law.
For $60.6 million as an ending balance based on this budget? That's correct?
For 2024, that's correct.
Correct.
And then if you adopt a 2025 budget, we will recompute that figure for 2025.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. I think you did a great job on listening to the goals, core services, getting us core services. This is my second budget cycle. I wish that some of these things, you know, it'd be easy to do in one year, in one budget cycle, but obviously, the community and our organization can't handle that much in one year, two years, maybe even three years. So there's a glide path to doing these things. I think you've heard us well, I know I'm speaking for myself in this seat, but core services, staffing stability so that we can perform good government service, what's expected of us in this community, and the property tax situation. We're only 20 to 25% of an individual's property tax statement, and doing what we can to the best of our ability to be good stewards over that, I think is important. I believe that this community is reeling because of soaring increases in property taxes. I hear it from my constituents, those that are on fixed income, small business owners. Significant number of people are reeling because of soaring property tax increases due to property valuation increases. So I think you've heard us and heard that we're going to do our best to hold ourselves while we're funding our departments, we're also going to do the best we can to be good stewards over that property tax. I would say the biggest heartburn in some of these things for me is the culture, rec, community development, there are cuts there. So when we talk about organizations that we've traditionally funded, how we got to funding them is an entirely different conversation and a conversation that will be ongoing, but there are cuts to these organizations. So we are emphasizing public safety in many regards, but we are cutting in some areas, and I think that creates a lot of heartburn for, I know for myself and I know some colleagues here, but also these organizations. I want to publicly say something that I think we're going to continue to say over and over again, you've heard whispers of this from this commission. I think that we are too dependent on property tax revenue in this community, in this Sedgwick County government. We are too dependent. I think that we've got to find a way to get those things that are not always deemed as core services, but like culture, rec, community development, parks, things of that sort, that we have got to find a way to reform some of these things, be it through shared services, functional consolidations, but mainly through not funding them through property taxes, but funding them through a sales tax in this community. There will be a letter going out from me personally, and I'll ask the commissioners also to sign on if they so choose. There will be a letter going out in the next two weeks to the city managers and the mayors of all 20 cities in Sedgwick County, asking them to come to a meeting to have a conversation about this exact topic, is how can we utilize sales tax over property tax in some of these non-core services like culture, rec, arts, community development, parks, these areas? How could we do this to reduce the dependency on property tax to our citizens while yet funding them and securing funding for these important community assets that do, that are important to the quality of life for our citizens? Can't say out of one side of our mouth that we want to attract and retain our people here in this community, and the other side of the mouth say quality of life, it doesn't matter. Any of these cuts represented in the culture and recreation is not a statement from us saying that these things don't matter and quality of life doesn't matter. It's a statement saying that we're too dependent on property taxes, and we've got to develop a plan to get us off of the dependency. And the best way to do that is through what I believe to be a sales tax, and not just from the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County government, I'm going to invite all 20 cities into this conversation, because I think we have to reform it, because these things matter that much to this community and the quality of life. So I wanted to make sure, as you presented that, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that there are conversations of reform that continue to happen so that we can move on a further glide path. That'll be very important. Last statement is that we, you've now handed us your recommended budget. Now it's our job. Now the budget is in our hands. We're going to adopt a budget on the 21st of August. Between now and then, there's going to be significant conversations happening of what we want to do, any adjustments we want to see made, the justifications for some of these things. There was a process that was started last year that I thought was helpful. There will be, in the agenda, every Wednesday meeting, every BOCC meeting, there will be a budget discussion line item that we're going to have an opportunity. a budget discussion line item that we're going to have an opportunity to discuss the budget. What I would suggest to the commission is that we adopt the same practice that was utilized last year, I thought was helpful, that if you have questions about the budget that you want to bring up in that line item of the agenda, please email finance so that they're ahead of time made aware, so that they can present the information and gather all the information so that they can give us a deliberate, intentional, well-thought-out answers to those questions. I think it'd be helpful, not only for our staff, I think it'd be helpful for commission too, so that we can give thought that this is important. And if there's going to be suggestions that are made, and I have a few, if there's going to be suggestions made, I want everybody to be able to have enough time to really think through them. So from moving forward as we have this, I think we're going to put in after consent, the consent agenda moving forward, that please email Tuesday. And if there's no, there's no questions, we'll move right through it. We'll move right through that line item on the agenda and to the next thing. But the discussions are going to continue. So again, thank you to staff and everybody that has put a lot of work into this. And it's in our hands now, and we'll get to budget adoption on the 21st. Okay, other questions? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, and I don't expect to have an answer to this one today. But I'm curious about our economic development fund and our county commission fund, what on average we have left at the end of the year for each of those, for maybe the last five years or so, just to get an idea of what's left, if any.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll take a, on economic development, I don't know if I have the exact numbers, but we, we spend approximately half of what is in that line item, and I can't, on the other item, I can't tell you.
So from your BOCC contingency, you, you all typically don't completely exhaust that in the course of a year. We can get you specific figures. That's something that Budget Office tracks on a monthly basis, is exactly how much is used in every contingency, so we can easily get you a report for five years. We can do the same thing for economic development, but Tom's right, depending on the special projects that come up, we may or may not use up that budget authority. But I think it's also important to note that we don't forecast, we don't plan for you guys to spend all of that money in economic development or in BOCC contingency.
In the, in the BOCC contingency, you, you spend a, but a fraction. I can think of the number of times we've gone into BOCC contingency on one hand in a, in a year. So the vast majority of that money is not spent.
Okay. When you talk about promoting the online public input, how are we going to push that out to the public so they know that we're doing that?
I will see if communications wants to speak to that. Otherwise, traditionally, what we've done is push it on social media, advertise it during these meetings.
Can we push it to, can we do a special email to all of the newsletters, people who get newsletters?
Yeah, sorry. Nicole gives to communications. Yes, we can include information on how you can watch the BOCC meetings. Currently, we broadcast on our website. We also have YouTube and Facebook, which is about double to triple what our numbers are that we have on KPTS.
Okay, and we'll push the link for the survey?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I will just say that I'm still struggling with some of the cuts that we're looking at. I understand why we're here. I think what I struggle with the most is anything that we have, we're in the middle of funding agreements that we're already a part of. I think that's, I don't know if that's a good partnership. I don't know if that's a good look for us to hurt relationships that have been built for the last however long. So I'm, I'm still struggling with some of that. Beyond that, I think this is, you know, it's really good. I'm glad that we're looking at the mill levy cut again. I think that's really important. I get calls from my community as well, especially people on fixed income. So knowing that we're doing our part to be responsible with their tax dollars is, is important. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and we'll digest this and go forward. But thank you for all the work.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate the comments up to this point. I think your comments regarding talking to Wichita and other communities about culture and rec and maybe other things, partnering together is a pretty good idea. Along that lines, I'm not so sure that cities will necessarily support the county if we do this on our own, but I would personally be interested in seeing a sales tax proposal to the, to the, to the taxpayers, to see if they would prefer to pay for these types of government with sales taxes instead of property taxes, not to increase revenue to the, to the government, to offset where the money comes from. So I want to be really clear, I'm not advocating for tax increase, I'm advocating for a shifting of where the dollars come from. I think, I think that culture and rec is something that really fits nicely with sales tax for lots of reasons. When the economy is doing well and people want to go out and spend money on things, they, they would support those community type things. I think property taxes ought to be reserved for things like public safety, infrastructure, human services. It's a philosophy, and I just think we've gotten ourselves in a position where we have been using property taxes for this purpose. I don't think it's the, the best way to set up government. So I would like to see us make that change. I did discover, just for, I'm not sure if I've talked about this with you, my colleagues here, here or not, I did discover apparently, and it seems like a very small amount of money, but at least it's something, we could shift our health, our general fund support for the health department from property taxes to sales taxes without legislative approval, simply put this on a ballot, and if it's approved, that would shift us down by about one mil. So one mil would be shifted from what we see today over to sales tax. Again, we would not, not provide revenue to the health department, but where that money comes from would be sales tax versus property tax. To me, it's something we ought to talk about. Those numbers, it'd be five cents on $100 worth of spending, roughly. A nickel, $100 worth of spending would provide the revenue currently to lower our mill levy by about one mil. And those are rough, those are, those are rounded off numbers, but that's approximately the, the proposal we could do today. We could put it on, on the November ballot this year if we wanted to. Again, it's one mil, not a lot, but it's something. And if we went to the legislature and worked with them, there's a couple of options. We could ask for a sales tax by, you know, approved by the electors that would offset, say roughly, let's just say a quarter cent sales tax, we'd lower our mill levy by probably more than five mils, okay? Or around that number. So that's something we could talk about, and that would be enough money, actually, we'd create even extra money to provide enough money to, to fund all of our culture and rec parts of our budget. So to me, it's something we ought to be talking to the legislature about, talking to our electors about. I know lots of folks don't care where the money comes from, and I, I see that perspective as well. But some people do seem that property taxes are more egregious for some reason than property and sales taxes. I think we need to, we need to have a more robust discussion. I would, if it was up to me, I would like to see that effort be made to move this from property tax to sales tax. And with that in mind, we already have a 1% sales tax as approved in, I think, 1985? 1985, I believe, she says yes? That I think this last year generated about just under $40 million for the county. I believe this last budget book I saw, I think Wichita was estimating about $87 million in revenue from that sales tax. So they get the majority of the sales tax, even though it's a county-wide sales tax. Most of that goes to Wichita. And cities like Derby get, I think, around $6 million, I believe. It's different, maybe she's not quite, maybe I'm off a little bit there. Let's just talk about Wichita for just a minute, though. That offsets their property tax dependency by about 18 mils for Wichita, and by Sedgwick County, about six mils. When I say, when I say that, we're talking about funding roads and bridges and general fund through sales tax. If you did not have a sales tax, you'd have to fund the very same things through property tax. So it's offset a resident of Wichita by 24 mils already. That's already happened. So someone who lives in Wichita, you're paying 24 mils less property taxes today because we passed a one cent sales tax, 1% sales tax back in 1985. Back in 1985, though, our focus for at least Sedgwick County and Wichita was Kellogg. Am I right about that? Again, we're still doing some, some improvements on Kellogg, but I think for most of the, most of the cities don't have that responsibility. I think other cities do take some of their money, half their money, and put it towards public works. What I'm wondering right now is legislatively, if they could take some of the control off that revenue and say, we can, we can put it in the general fund and put it where we want it. And the reason I say that is because I would like to see us maybe do a different way to, to decide when to do road improvements. I think the county does a really good job. We're very, we're very aggressive. When I first became commissioner, we did a refresh on every county road every five years. We shifted that to every six years, and we saved some money. And I think right now, we're maybe closer to every seven years, almost, some, a lot of these roads, I'm not sure, maybe I'm wrong. Cat, or, I'm sure Lynn can say that right now from where he sits. But, you know, I think at the end of the day, if a road doesn't need to be refreshed yet, we should let it go on a little bit longer and do it when it's the right time. It's nice to take care of stuff when it's the right time, but not earlier than when it's needed. And that's kind of the idea there. So I'm not so sure that the calendar is the right way to handle that. I think that maybe the way to handle that is through an assessment. And some of these roads probably could go longer than six years, or maybe longer. But if we have to spend half of our sales tax revenue on public works, that kind of defines our budget for us for public works, for this part of our budget, I think we ought to have some discretion on what we spend there and potentially have the chance of moving some of that revenue to where we feel like it's the most needed. And I, right now, we have constraints based on the state law. So I'd like to maybe talk to those folks. Me personally, I have asked for a sales tax years ago for stream maintenance. Johnson County does a stream maintenance sales tax. They do not fund stream maintenance or storm management, storm management revenue. They do not fund that through property tax dollars. They're going to, they're about, they're proposed a $1.8 billion budget this year. And in that includes revenue from sales tax that they spend on storm water management and stream maintenance. We don't actually have a storm water management fund here. We do use some fee funds for, for stream maintenance, but right primarily, it's just property tax right now. And then, again, that's, right now, that's enough money that I would like to have that reconsidered potentially. Other counties don't necessarily do stream maintenance. I think it's, it's a nice thing to do, but it's not, not something we have to do. Nothing in state law says we have to do this. And I, I think at the end of the day, we have to reconsider those things we don't have to do. It's a good idea. I like the fact that we're doing it, but I'm also looking for places to trim where we don't have to do something. That's one. I'm also, we haven't talked about it yesterday, but I, yesterday, but I'm, I'm still concerned about the, the knowledge that we're probably going to have to put about almost a million dollars into our treasurer's office at the end of the year, because the fee funds for her office are not covering the expenses for that office. It's not through the fault of our treasurer, it's the fault of the legislature and the state law. We need to have that addressed. So there's a lot of work to do here, and I'm not so sure that I like everything about this budget. My manager stole, my head was down when I was doing some writing here. Did you present this to the public yet? The, the public seen?
Negative.
Negative. Is it appropriate for we actually let the public know what's happening here? I think they need to know. I did some math on this to make sure, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but just want to make sure we understand. The crime prevention fund for corrections has been reduced by $100,000 in this budget proposal. And again, it went from 582, 383 to 482, 383. So that's about a, not quite a, I'd say about an 18% reduction or so in that fund. Parks Department, I understand part of the reduction is for a CIP project, but nevertheless, there's a 482 million, a $482,000 reduction year over year for the Parks Department. Sedgwick County Zoo actually has an increase in this budget of $277,000. Yeah, so they have, I think it's the only increase on the page. Sedgwick County Fair has a reduction, I call it a haircut, of about $2,400. The Kansas American, African American Museum has about a $9,200 cut. For them, that's about a 10%, I believe. And then Forever Festival, we're talking a very tiny, tiny haircut of $1,000, going from $10,000 to $9,000. The Arts Council is being trimmed, $1,000, going from $15,000 to, to $14,000. And back in 2016, when I became commissioner, well, I became commissioner in 2015, we were funding the Arts Council at that time, $10,000. And that year, we, we cut them from $10,000 to zero, and the wheels came off the wagon, apparently. So we went, when it was reconsidered, they went from zero back to $15,000. They've had $15,000 a number of years since then, but historically, it was $10,000. And now we're going to go from $15,000 back down to $14,000, so they've got a tiny haircut of $1,000. The one that probably is going to be hard for the public and probably hard for some commissioners here is Exploration Place. They're seeing a, a little more than, almost a $210,000 reduction this year, if this is approved as it is. And again, that's roughly a, I didn't do the math here, but I guess it's about a 10% reduction, right? Okay. And then economic development, Commissioner Lopez already mentioned this, but they get just a little bit less than a $100,000 cut, they're a $95,000 reduction year over year, dropping them down to 1.8 million. And then Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, that was not intended to be funded every year. This is a planned reduction, but some people are going to misunderstand that. We gave them $33,000 last, in current year budget, they're dropping down to zero next year. That's a planned reduction, so please don't get upset. Extension Council, this is, I'm getting a lot of email on this one. They've heard there's going to be some kind of change to their budget. I don't think they knew what that was going to be, but I'm getting a lot of email, but they're being reduced from 825,000 down to 742,000. That's about roughly an $83,000 cut. So altogether, we are looking about, I believe, a, on this page of proposals, again, because the zoo's getting an increase of 277,000. Total changes on this set of proposals is a reduction of $491,000. Almost, 491, 686 is my number. So I guess I want the public to know, we're trying to be conservative. We are, we are saying no to spending requests on the outside and even within the, within the organizations. We're, we're increasing salary for our staff, which is needed to be done. And we're not capturing all of the assessed value growth. We are lowering the mill levy. And having said all those things, this is a conservative budget, the best we can do. And if we had, if we had to stay under the revenue neutral rate, you think that's severe? We'd have to cut about $16 million out of the budget this year to stay under the revenue neutral rate. $16 million. We just talked about less than half a million. So I want the public to know, Sedgwick County is a conservative county. A nice article came out about a week and a half or two weeks ago that compares Sedgwick County and Johnson County, and I can tell you, I'm very proud of you, Mr. Tom, and my colleagues and our staff, because we are a conservative county. But having said that, when we adopt this budget, the media is going to say, we increased taxes. So I guess I'd ask the people, let us know what you want us to do. I'm here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Chairman, and appreciate the comments. Commissioner Howell, one quick cleanup on the zoo, and I'm going to have Lindsay come to the podium, explain this a little bit more in depth. The, the zoo is being asked to give a $250,000 cut to their CIP budget. The reason you see a total increase there is because we have sour re employees out there, and that's where the increase comes from. And Lindsay, can you articulate on that?
Sure. So commissioners, in your recommended budget book, there is a section, a tab for culture and recreation. And if you switch back in that section to pages 612 and 613, what you'll see is details for that budget. And so of the, I'm going to talk about 2024 for a second. So for the 2024 budget, the zoo has $8.6 million of personnel, and that accounts for, you'll see down below, 112.5 FTEs that are on the county staffing table. These are our employees. So those employees are on the general pay plan. So as Tom recommended to you before, that group of employees receives the 2% structure adjustment plus a 3% GPA. So the bulk of those dollar increases are because we're not cutting any FTEs at the zoo. And, but if you look just below on contractual services, this is where we give them money to do their capital improvement program. We are reducing that from $400,000 in 2024 to $150,000 in 2025. So while there's an overall increase, it's because those are our employees, and they are receiving the same compensation adjustment than anyone else on the general pay plan would.
How many FTEs again at the zoo for their Sedgwick?
12.5.
112.5, thank you.
And then another example, we talked about the Parks Department. Well, the Parks Department also had a master plan that was added into their budget. They had some adjustments that were made for electricity increases and things like that. There also was a CIP project that was cash funded in 2024 that went away in 2025 because it was funded in '24. So all of those things have a role in making those dollars look different because we didn't want to penalize any of the employees. So any of those employees that are on our staffing table, so for example, Exploration Place, we have one FTE that's on that staffing table. His, that salary has been adjusted for compensation as well, but their contractual amount has, has only been adjusted by that original amount that we discussed. We're not affecting the personnel side of that. So that's why you'll see some of these shifts, so maybe why overall, it doesn't look like there's a million dollar decrease, but there is, it's just that there are some mitigating effects to that.
That CIP change you talked about for the zoo, is that a one-time or is that reoccurring?
Recurring.
Recurring. Thank you for that. Okay.
And it's important, and I wanted to note that I, that, and I'm glad that not everybody loves this budget. I mean, it's a 98% budget, right? You've got to come in and adjust. But, and nobody likes, I surely did not like going into culture arts and cutting, recommending cutting, and for reasons that Commissioner or that Chairman Beatty brought up. But we tried to make it equitable, we tried to make it small enough that we wouldn't end programs or cause seismic shifts within these organizations, but we did try to touch them all fairly inequitably. So just want to make it clear that the zoo's not getting, they were, they've been asked to, they're being, they're being asked to cut too, so.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Lindsay, you might as well stay there for a minute. The cuts that are going to each of these organizations, we're not going to make that on one January. We're going to give them times throughout their budget year so that it doesn't hit them all at once. Don't we give them some kind of a grace period, as long as it happens during the 2025 budget?
Well, and I'll use Exploration Place as an example of that, Commissioner. Yes and no to that. Questionable, and then he chime in as well. EP runs on a fiscal of July 1 to June 30. We did not touch their 24 slash 25 budget. We're going to make it after July 1 of next year. So we tried to accommodate that as best we could. And then at various points of the year, the county will write checks to many of these entities at various times during, that would be the time during the year that they would recognize or see that cut. Anything you want to add?
And one other point, at the zoo, we have 112 employees. At Exploration Place, I think we have one. So it makes a lot of difference on the number of employees on whether there's an increase or not. Okay? I'm finished with Lindsay, thank you. There's been a lot of talk about the, uh, sales tax, and I, I support that. I think I'll sign on to a letter that the chairman puts out, but a little bit discussion on the one cent sales tax. I guess I'll probably need Lindsay back up, I'm sorry. We're going to cut the mill levy, and we cut it last year.
Yes.
But a little known fact is that that cut impacts our one cent sales tax.
Correct.
Because as that money is divided up among the 20 cities, it's on a formula. So last year, how much did we lose because of the mill levy cut from the one cent sales tax?
Probably, I haven't done the actual math, but probably about $150,000.
And with the proposed third of a mill cut, how much are we going to lose again next year?
At the minimum, 167,000.
So it all has an impact. We can't forget that. So I just wanted to clarify those things, because there's been a lot of talk about sales tax. And I agree that we are very dependent upon property tax, and we need to be able to shift some of that away from it, and I look forward to opening up that discussion. Thank you.
Chairman, if I could chime in, and Commissioner Howell made a comment before that, I think as we have this discussion further about shifting from property tax to sales tax, what's changed dynamically in the last 20 years in the state of Kansas is the state has taken action, which has made us much more reliant, Commissioner Howell brought this up, made us much more reliant on property tax, and that's part of the, part of our problem going forward.
That's exactly right. Okay, thank you for this presentation. Again, budget team and finance, everyone involved here, thank you so much. Lots of discussions to continue. I will make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Item J, authorize the publication of the maximum property tax levy to fund the 2025 Sedgwick County budget, provide notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and establish public budget hearings on July 31, 2024, and August 21, 2024.
All right. I've got six more minutes still. Good morning, Lorian, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Lorian Showalter-Ary, Budget Director. The item before you is a request for authorization to publish the notice of public budget hearing, which also establishes the maximum budget and the maximum property tax levy for the 2025 budget. State law does require the county publish the time and place of a budget hearing at least 10 days prior to that hearing. The notice must include a summary of the proposed budget that includes the maximum proposed spending for a given year, the maximum property tax levy proposed to fund the budget at a fund level, and this date is often referred to as the last update, because after this point, the total budget for property tax funds and maximum property tax levy cannot be increased without republishing the required notice and holding another public hearing. The notice will also publicize the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate of 26.784 mils in the recommended budget. This will authorize us to notify the county clerk, emit the publication in our county newspaper and on the county website of the August 21 hearing on exceeding this rate. The maximum proposed budget is $563,444,425 to be funded with a tax levy of $199,561,417, based on a mill levy rate of 28.659 mils, which is a decrease of .329 mils from the final 2024 rate. Our first public hearing will be held Wednesday, July 31 at 6:00 p.m., and the final public hearing will be held here in this room, Wednesday, August 21 at 9:00 a.m., and budget adoption is also scheduled for August 21. If you stand for any questions, if there are none, then I recommend you authorize the publication.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, Lorian, thank you. And this revenue neutral rate's kind of a thorn under my saddle. We're having people that are asking, actually candidates from my position, to pledge that they will not violate the revenue neutral rate. That is impossible. I just want to make sure that the public understands that asking someone to pledge to do something that you cannot do without significant cuts in personnel and services is not possible in our county. I guess it is possible, but it would totally destroy what we've been working for, for the past several years. In addition, we could never do it anyway because of the, of the 1.5 mil levy that we're bound by state statute to give WSU, because that's going to go up automatically every year. So if we even decided to do it and, and comply with the state statute, we would have to cut personnel. There's no other choice. So I just want to make it very plain that asking candidates to swear that they would not violate the revenue neutral rate is unconscionable, and it cannot be done. And I don't want to see people that have to sit on this board in the future that are bound by some kind of a bogus oath that they can't deal with. So I want to make that plain, but I, I support what we're doing. We are going to, to have a small cut in the mill levy, which I sincerely appreciate. But beyond that, we cannot go back to the revenue neutral rate. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Okay. I will, I will handle, I will handle this motion. So I move that the board authorizes the publication of a notice of Sedgwick County's proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for its 2025 budget and to notify the county clerk of the same. The publication regarding notice of Sedgwick County's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for its 2025 budget shall include the revenue neutral rate of 26.784, a total maximum budget of $563,444,425, and add valorem property tax levy of $199,561,417, which is approximately equivalent to 28.659 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation, which is subject to technical adjustments and the date, time, and location of the public hearing regarding the revenue neutral rate, which is to be held on August 21, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. in Ruffin Auditorium, 100 North Broadway, Wichita, Kansas, 67202.
We have a motion and a second.
Do you have?
Yeah, yes. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Before you call the roll, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to make some comments. So last year at this time, I, I discussed potentially a motion that would essentially be a little bit more aggressive, trying to lower the mill levy. I believe I said half mil last year, and we ended up, another commissioner wanted to do a quarter mil, we split the difference, and it passed, I believe, four to one. To do what we did, we basically leveled it off at the 29.000 mils. And after technical adjustments, we lost another .012 mils, so that got us down to 28.988 mils. I would go through that again this year, but I don't think it's worth my time. I know it's not going to pass, so I was going to give that up. But in, in supporting this motion today, I just want to state upfront, these are maximum numbers. This is maximum mill levy and maximum spending. We can do less. We can lower the mill levy, we can lower the spending, and I think that's upon us, working with the public and our partners and our friends and our staff, to get these numbers down further. It doesn't mean this is what we have to pass. These are just maximum numbers. So again, I'll support the motion this year, but it's my intent to see us find a way to make this even more conservative. We're going to do everything we can to make it even more conservative, at least that's my personal opinion. So I know I have some changes to the budget, I'll advocate for that over time, over the next few weeks. And on August the 21st, I guess it is, I will hopefully make those, those motions at that time to make some changes to, to adjust this budget. But I mean, supporting this this year doesn't mean I support these numbers. Personally, I'm just willing to go past this point to have that conversation going forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Lorian. Joe, one second. We're going to stay kind of on the theme of what we're doing here, and I'm going to pause the Board of County Commission meeting and call to order the Fire District Number One meeting for the governing body of Fire District Number One for Wednesday, July 10, 2024. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Our first item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
Public agenda.
There are nothing, sign up for public agenda. Next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of June 12, 2024.
Commissioners, if it suits you, I'm going to combine items A and B. We were all present. So I'll make a motion to approve the fire meeting minutes of June 12, June 26, 2024. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Do business. Item C, authorize the publication of the maximum property tax levy to refund, to fund the 2025 Fire District One budget, provide notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and establish public budget hearings on July 31, 2024, and August 21, 2024.
Very good. Lorian, you're already there.
I'm already here. So I guess good afternoon now. Lorian Showalter-Ary, Budget Director. This item is identical in purpose to the item you just approved for Sedgwick County. The publication sets the maximum budget for the Fire District at $30,140,800 and establishes a maximum product tax levy of $22,171,711, based on a mill levy rate of 17 mils, which is a decrease of .883 mils from the final 2024 rate. Like the county, this item will also publicize the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate of 16.338 mils in the recommended budget. Again, the first public hearing will be Wednesday, July 31 at 6:00 p.m., and the final public hearing will be held Wednesday, August 21 at 9:00 a.m. Again, budget adoption is scheduled for August 21.
Okay. Any questions for Lorian? Okay, same item we just did, except for the Fire District. For the public's knowledge, the Fire District, we are the Fire Board for the Fire District Number One. It oversees Sedgwick County Fire Department, the fire operations in the Fire District. It's its own set of books. It cannot borrow money from Sedgwick County government, it, it runs its own set of books, and, and it's a very unique district with a lot of opportunities here, and we're going to see a mill levy reduction here, or being proposed, a mill levy reduction here, significant one at that. So I will make a motion. I move that the board authorizes the publication of a notice of Fire District One's proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for its 2025 budget and to notify the county clerk of the same. The publication regarding notice of Fire District One's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for its 2025 budget shall include the revenue neutral rate of 16.338, a total maximum budget of $30,140,800, and add valorem property tax levy of $22,171,711, which is approximately equivalent to 17.000 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation, which is subject to technical adjustments and the date, time, and location of the public hearing regarding the revenue neutral rate, which is to be held on August 21, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. in Ruffin Auditorium, 100 North Broadway, Wichita, Kansas, 67202. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, thank you again, Lorian. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Morning, or good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items D and E on fire agenda.
Okay. Commissioners, we have an opportunity to review the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items D and E. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything other? Anything other, under other. Seeing none, next item.
Executive session.
No executive session for the Fire District, so I'll adjourn the Fire District Number One meeting. Return us back to the Board of County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item K, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, special meeting on July 3, 2024.
There he is, Joe Thomas.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm always happy to help our good friends of budget out.
Yes.
Great team. So this is the regular meeting of Board of Bids and Contracts on July 3, and we have three items that we're presenting to you for your, your approval. Item number one is Lenovo Personal Computer Devices, Division of Information and Technology. And this recommendation is to establish a contract with Converge One, doing business as C1, and is utilizing the NASPO Contract 23013 and the State of Kansas Contract 55222. And this is good through June 30 of 2025 and has a three one-year options to renew. Second item is the computer room air conditioning units for the Emergency Communications Center, and this is Project Services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Vertiv Corporation, and that's in the amount of $283,417.49. And our final item is Wichita State University Consulting Services to be utilized by the Department of Corrections. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from WSU in the amount of $53,000 for a period of one year. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
today, and so I'm here to answer your questions. What we're looking to do here is to take one of our tag clerk FTEs, reclassify this as a title approver supervisor. This would add additional person to our title approving unit and provide some oversight and some supervision on our title approving process. So, currently, what happens is that whenever an individual comes in and does some title work, they buy a new vehicle or a used vehicle, whatever, they come in, they do some title work. So, a clerk does the title work and submits that paperwork. They scan it in, and we have a title approver at a later date, go through and double-check the paperwork to make sure that we're in accordance with administrative rules by Kador and State of Kansas statutes in registering that vehicle. So, after it's approved by the title approver, that is when it goes up to the state, the title is printed and then sent out. We're currently seeing about 400 to 450 titles per day in Sedgwick County, and we're only capable with the two existing positions that we have of producing somewhere between 3 and 350 titles a day. So, we're always behind about 100 titles a day. So, to take care of that, what we have been doing is there are people within our organization, primarily supervisors, who have the knowledge and the skill set to be able to approve titles. And so, what we're finding is that about once every two or three months, we're inviting them to work overtime on a Saturday, to come in, work four hours or so to approve titles, and the amount of money that we're spending on overtime is at least twice as much as what it would be to reclassify this position, have an extra person in that office who can do a full-time title approving job.
Well, great explanation. That's why I'm going to vote for it. Okay? But now comes my question. So, are you doing this for the property taxpayers in Sedgwick County, because it's coming out of general funds is what this request is going to come from, or are you doing it as a requirement for the State of Kansas?
The State of Kansas. I mean, we're an agent of the state, and like all the other 105 Treasurers, we provide that service by the State of Kansas.
Okay. So, what I understand then is that the property taxpayers in Sedgwick County, this year, I think it was between $600,000 and $700,000, that we have to supplement the tag office in order to be able for them to do our tag office, to do state business.
That's correct.
And this adds, I don't remember, it was $3,000 or $4,000 to the rest of this year, as I recall, but that also comes from the property taxpayers to supplement what is a state function. Next year, it's close to $1 million is what it's going to cost the taxpayers in Sedgwick County to do state jobs. That's my concern. Okay? I don't believe that it's, well, actually, we're the last out of 105 counties that got to this point. So, I certainly hope the legislature recognizes that next time when they go into session, and I'm sure that we'll put it on our legislative agenda. But let me just talk a little bit about property tax, because we've said it several times earlier, when we were looking at the budget, we are overly dependent on property tax in this state, and it's the most hated tax that we have. Out of all of them, people hate to pay the property tax. As we look at who they hate, it comes down to Sedgwick County, because why? It's because the assessor, appraiser, works for Sedgwick County. We pay their salaries, and yet, we only appoint them once every four years, and they actually work for PVD. They do not work for Sedgwick County. I can't go tell the appraiser to lower the assessed value on any home because they don't work for us. The Treasurer, where you work for, you send out the bills, and it comes with an envelope that says Sedgwick County. So, everybody blames Sedgwick County for their property tax, and that's where we get the most of our phone calls, the most of our emails, is when they get their property tax bill and when they, twice a year, so two times a year, we get feedback, and then when they, the appraisers, and you all send out the new property tax evaluation. And yet, if you look at your property tax, and I know Commissioner Howe mentioned it earlier, and I think Commissioner Beatty did, is that overall, the smallest part on most people's property tax bill is actually our mill levy that we just passed a motion on violating the revenue neutral rate. But in reality, our mill levy is the second lowest in the entire State of Kansas, and we're keeping it that way. We are a conservative group of Commissioners, and we'll keep it that way. So, why are we so dependent on property tax? Well, if you go back and look at what the legislature has done to us over a history of time, they removed LAVTR, which was supposed to share some of the funding from the state. And we've tried to get that corrected this past legislative session, in addition, CCRS, City-County Revenue Sharing. They eliminated both of those in this last session, saying, well, we're not going to pay it to you. Even though they're sitting on a $3 billion surplus, the legislature says, no, we're not going to give you any of that money back so you can lower your property tax. They cut the tax that we were able to put on machinery and equipment in the past. They cut our mortgage registration fee, and now they're requiring us to fund the tag office. So, all of these things are making it more dependent on property tax, and yet, they're looking at possibly passing a constitutional amendment that caps the property tax in the future. Well, again, and Commissioner Howe spoke about it earlier, what that does is the Constitution requires it to be fair and equal. Is that?
Uniform.
Uniform and equal. I'm sorry. Thank you. It requires your property taxes to be uniform and equal. Well, if you pass a cap of 4%, which is some of the recommended numbers on property tax, what that does is that two houses sit inside beside, one of them sells a couple of times, the other one doesn't sell at all, they're both supposedly worth the same, but they're actually not uniform and equal. So, they're going to have to, in addition, they want to make it a constitutional amendment rather than a statute so that when they screw it up, we can't change it again. Well, every one of those legislators are up for election in August and November. It's time to talk to them and tell them, you're not hot, we told them last year, hey, take off some of this 21.5 mill levy that you're doing for schools and backfill it with this $3 billion that you've got sitting there. Did they do it? No. Didn't happen. So, the legislature is the big organization and the governor together that impact your property tax in this community. I've already spoken about the revenue neutral rate. They passed that. We can't do it. I'd love to be able to meet the revenue neutral rate, but it is absolutely impossible. So, I used you today, Brandy. I'm sorry.
I feel used, too.
But it's just one more example of how the legislature or the State of Kansas is passing on the expense of government to property taxes locally. I don't think they understand local government. So, I just wanted to get up on my soapbox because we've got press setting here that hopefully they put this out to the public so that they understand it's not us that is doing this, that we need help. Well, you have anything, Brandy?
I will add that Sedgwick County does about 15% of all the state's work when it comes to motor vehicle things. When I first got here about 10 years ago, the State of Kansas was approving the titles themselves, and this was something that got passed down to us, a task, one of many, that we are now doing. And so, the overtime that we incur, the staff that we have to pay for to do the title approving was just one more thing the state passed down. The fees that we charge, they haven't been adjusted in about 30 years, and the fees, the state gets 85%, the county gets 15%. So, we're doing all the work, they're getting all the money, so, yeah, it's frustrating.
Well, we thank you, we thank your entire staff for what they do. They are taking care of our community, but it is expense to our property tax owners, and I want everybody to understand that we'll continue to provide that service. We're proud of what you do, but we're not proud of the fact that we're having to pick up funding that the State of Kansas should be complying with. Thank you.
Okay. Brandy, thanks again. I've said this to Brandy, our Treasurer, I want to say to you and publicly, I know that some people are asking why we're making such a big deal out of a $3,500 difference when there is an offset in overtime that you explained. I just want the public to understand that we are that serious about things that come out of property tax dollars, that we are going to, I mean, everything, from the commission's standpoint, everything gets discussed, everything gets a thorough vetting, and there's justification for everything. So, I know 30, there's 2,800-plus employees, we just talked about a $590 million budget, 46 departments, and some people may be saying, you're talking about $3,500 in difference. Well, those are property tax dollars, and we're going to take every effort we can to make sure we're being good stewards over every dollar of it. So, I want you to know, you made a great case for this, a great case for this, and this makes a lot of sense in a lot of ways. So, thank you for coming and explaining. So, appreciate it. Okay. I want to make a motion to approve item R of the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Any committee reports? Saying none. Next item, please.
Other.
Other. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Very briefly, tonight starts Sedgwick County Fair. The parade starts at 6:30, and we've got a fair after that along with some great places to eat. I know I go out there every year to eat, and our district attorney is usually serving me, so it's kind of nice to see him serve us once. But come on out. I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of politicians there because it's an election year, and so everybody is going to be in the parade, so it'll probably be a longer parade than normal. I won't be in the parade. I'm going to go out and observe it and enjoy it, but come on out to the parade. Thank you all.
Very good. Anything else, other? Saying none. Next item, please.
Executive session.
Okay. We do have an executive session. Commissioner Lopez.
Let's see. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 12:55 for preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for use by a county department, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 12:55.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. We will break and return at 12:55. Thank you.[1199.97]
Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item please.
Committee reports.
Any committee reports? Saying none. Next item please.
Other.
Other. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Very briefly, tonight starts Cedric County Fair. The parade starts at 6:30 and we've got a fair after that along with some great places to eat. I know I go out there every year to eat and our district attorney is usually serving me, so it's kind of nice to see him serve us once. But come on out. I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of politicians there because it's an election year and so everybody is going to be in the parade, so it'll probably be a longer parade than normal. I won't be in the parade. I'm going to go out and observe it and enjoy it, but come on out to the parade. Thank you all.
Very good. Anything else, Senator Rether? Saying none. Next item please.
Executive session.
We do have an executive session. Commissioner Lopez.
Let's see. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 12:55 for preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for use by a county department and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 12:55.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howe. Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we will break and return at 12:55. Thank you.
Okay, we are back from executive session. There was no binding action taken. Any other business that needs to come before the commission?
Nope.
Seeing none, we are officially adjourned. Have a good afternoon.